Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our May 11 meeting, the reading of the minutes will be omitted. I do have one change that I know of to the minutes. And with respect to the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to limit debate, the minutes should reflect that the committee reports shall be limited to seven minutes each. The Education and Finance Committee reports shall be exempt from this limitation. So that should have been part of our minutes, and we will make that change. Are there any other suggested changes to our minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as amended stand adopted upon unanimous consent.
Members of the RTM, Mary Pellegrino served in the RTM from January 1980 to December 1995, and again from May 1997 until her death last month. The gap coincided with the last illness of her husband and its immediate aftermath. When we elected her back in May 97, there was a touch of jubilation in the district meeting that night. For many years, Mary was secretary to the District One delegation. Mary, Dean Goss, and myself did most of the work needed to run District One in these years. I believe there were no empty slots at election time for District One during this period. Mary and I worked diligently to fill the roster for an election. She was splendid in doing so, particularly at getting petition signatures at very short notice. Mary wanted the RTM to be strong and work well. She also did not want the RTM to be open to attack by its enemies because of lack of membership. Mary had many sharply defined views on the town of Greenwich, and in particular on District One. These were very purposeful and well thought out. She was entirely against bonding. She was a great enemy of tiered parking in downtown Greenwich. She was a great friend to trees in downtown Greenwich. She and her friend, Mrs. Carroll, really saved many that might otherwise have been destroyed. Indeed, about a month before her death, she wrote a letter to the tree warden over saving a tree in front of People's Bank on Lower Greenwich Avenue. The tree is still there. It was saved. In the controversies that touched District One over the last 18 years, I can bear witness to her industry. I first worked with her over the proposed phase-in of real estate values in the early 1990s. We published a tabulation of the effects of the new assessment on 157 condominium owners. The result exposed the proposed phase-in for its inherent unfairness, and it died for lack of support. Mary was very active in the opposition to putting the police station next to Julian Curtis School, and collected a huge number of signatures on the petition I wrote during that period. She opposed the broader use of Public Act 490 as it merely transferred tax to middle class and working families. She had a great interest in making Nathaniel Witherell a better place, and I had very many conversations with her on this. She condemned the attack on the size of the RTM in 2007. Mary Pellegrino had a fine, clear mind. Matters were quickly judged, and I might add, with high accuracy as good or bad. She was very generous to many people in politics, of current office holders, the names of Alfred Camillo Jr. and Fred DiCarlo III immediately come to mind. She was naturally generous in both business and private life. She had wonderful courage and sense of humanity. Her fortitude, when faced with the adversities of life, was truly remarkable. Many years ago, I asked her why she supported a certain candidate for office. She told me that it was the man's humanity. I said that among all the reasons that I've ever heard, this was among the best for supporting a person. Her humanity and kindness brought her many friends. I think many have mourned her passing.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, town officials, members, and guests. On May 11, the members of District 12 lost a former member and friend with the passing of Don Walton. Don was a resident of the Havimar Park area of Old Greenwich for 54 years, and served nearly 30 of them as a member of the representative town meeting. He served as the district's delegate too, and went on to become the chairman of the RTM Education Committee. Don grew up in Pennsylvania, where he developed a love for nature and the environment. Hunting and fishing were some of his favorite pastimes. After retiring from ITT Rayonier, where he was director of marketing and business economics, he devoted himself to public service and conservation issues. Don was elected a lifetime director of the Mayanis Chapter of Trout Unlimited and held leadership positions in the Connecticut Waterfowl Association. He served on the Board of Directors of the Mayanis River Watershed Council, pursuing legislation for the cleanup of the Norwalk and Mayanis Rivers. He was involved in the creation of the Mayanis River Park and the installation of a fish ladder, which allows some species of saltwater fish to spawn in the freshwater above the dam on the Mayanis River in Riverside. I will most remember Don for his leadership efforts in securing municipal improvement status on a piece of town-owned property located near the Dundee School. His stewardship of the proposal through the various boards and commissions culminated in the creation of the Shangala Natural Park, a park named in honor of a well-respected science teacher who had taught at Eastern Middle School. Don not only supported education in the RTM, he took elementary school classes to visit the Indian Rock Shelter in Shangala Park, and assisted middle school science classes with sampling water quality in the Mayanis River. In his backyard, Don, with the help of a group from the First Congregational Church, grew fruit and vegetables, which were donated to neighbor to neighbor. His counsel on educational and environmental issues will be missed by district members and the community. District 12 proposes the following resolution. Be it resolved that whereas Donald R. Walton was a resident of District 12, living in Old Greenwich, Connecticut since 1955, whereas Donald R. Walton was involved in the leadership of organizations which promote the preservation of fish and waterfowl, and that work for a clean water environment in the Fairfield County area, whereas Donald R. Walton was instrumental in the creation of the Shangala Natural Park in Riverside, Connecticut, whereas Donald R. Walton served in town government as a member of District 12 and is chairman of the RTM Education Committee, therefore let it be resolved that this meeting recognize the contributions that Donald R. Walton has made to the town of Greenwich, and observe a moment of silence in his honor. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that a suitable copy be given to his family. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the members please rise and join me in a moment of silence in honor of Mary Pellegrino I welcome everyone to the June meeting of the representative town meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM moderator. The organization of our call tonight was sent out to all district and committee chairs yesterday. I will summarize that now. Based on the reports we receive from our districts and committees, it is my intention to place the following five items on our consent calendar. Items four, nine, 15, 16, and 20. Any items remaining on the consent calendar will not have committee reports, and there will be no discussion on those items. I will recommend that items one, two, five, eight, 11, 13, and 14 be placed on our combined calendar, for which we take one vote, but we do have committee reports and discussion, and we can't amend any items that are among the combined items. And that would leave, assuming that is how we organize our calendar, that would leave to consider separately items three, six, seven, 10, 12, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23. And it would be my intention, among those separate items, to suggest a combination of item 18, which is the Launa Contract, and item 23, the GMEA Contract. They have in common the fact that the membership of those unions have not yet voted on them. So I think we can treat those together. We would treat the Teamsters contracts separately, though. All right, so that is the broad outline. Let me -- yes, Mr. Boutel? That is a separate item. All right. In the email that I sent around to our district and committee chairs, I recommended that we take up as the last item the item that we anticipate the most debate on. And the reason for that is that as the hour grows longer, we know there is a tendency of some of our members to leave the meeting for obvious reasons. If that occurs when we have substantial remaining business, that is not good process. So it is my strong recommendation that we stick with our practice over the years to keep the controversial, meaning the items that we expect the most debate, last. It serves several purposes. It guarantees that we will have a full audience for all of our business, which we should be doing, and it also encourages speakers to use time efficiently on the last items as the hour grows later. So at this point, pursuant to our rules, I will place on the consent calendar the following items. And assuming that they remain on that calendar, the only thing you will hear about those tonight will be what I now say. The first is item number four, which is the appointment of Elliot R. Benton to be a member of the Inland, Wetlands, and Water Courses One Word Agency for a term beginning April 1, 2009, and expiring March 31, 2013. The next item is item number nine. That is a resolution authorizing the First Selectman to accept the conveyance of a parcel of land from the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation containing 4.35 acres, situated on the south side of the Merritt Parkway and the west side of Lake Avenue. The third item on the consent calendar is item 15. That is a resolution to accept a gift of $10,000 for the purpose of funding the 2009 Spring Citizen Police Academy. Item 16 is the fourth item. That is a resolution to appropriate the sum of $5,525 to be placed in an account for auto equipment. And the last item I will designate for our consent calendar is item number 20. And that is a resolution to accept a gift of solar trash containers valued at $10,000 to be installed at Greenwich Point, and that is a gift from the Friends of Greenwich Point. Is there any objection to the designation of those five items for our consent calendar? Hearing none, will our district chairs please mark your voting cards. Consent calendar items four, nine, 15, 16, and 20, and proceed to poll your delegation. All right. It was the consensus that of the remaining items, we combine the following seven items for voting purposes. And those are items one, two, five, eight, 11, 13, and 14. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to combine those items for voting purposes? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine items one, two, five, eight, 11, 13, and 14 for voting purposes. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of suspending the rules and combining items one, two, five, eight, 11, 13, and 14, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. All right. So at this point, we would -- well, all right. I do anticipate, by the way, that at the end of the combined items, we will now proceed to the combined items. At the end of the combined items, there will be a motion to take up the Plan of Conservation and Development, which is item 22, as the first of the separate items. So I alert you to that, and I recommend that we not support that motion. I have also placed outside the auditorium and at the front of the hall speaker sign-up lists. If we have any interested individuals who would like to speak on an item on our agenda, I have separate sheets for the Plan of Conservation and Development, which is item 22, and then I have a separate sheet for any other item that we have interested speakers on. So you can sign up outside or at the front of the hall here. So that brings us now to the first of the combined items, which is item number one, which is an appointment, our First Selectman, Peter Tessie. Good evening, Mr. Tessie.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, and ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. I want to introduce to all of you tonight two high school seniors who are interns in the office of the First Selectman, Lexi and Alexandra. Please give them a round of applause and welcome them. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term beginning 4/109 and expiring 3/31/10, Kathy Weisenberger.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item one has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of our committees that considered this item, beginning with Karen Sodikon, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and RTM. The committee met with Kathy last Tuesday night. She shared with us her interest in serving on the board, indicating that she was very interested in most of the areas that the board addresses in their role as advisors to the First Selectmen. Specifically, her background has been in youth athletics. She has been on the Greenwich High School Sports Foundation, the Greenwich Baseball Foundation, the Middle School Sports Committee, the Family Centers Board. However, she also said that she had done her homework and had taken a tour of all the town's parks and facilities so that they were fresh in her mind. The committee's only concern was that the makeup of the Board of Parks and Recreation might be weighted more towards organized sports and athletics and their facilities versus the more passive recreational direction. That was reflected in the vote. Two districts abstained. The vote being 10-0-2. Districts one and seven abstained.
Thank you. Chris Von Keiseling, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We met with Ms. Weisenberger on the 21st of April. Our vote was 9-2-1. Districts six and two were voting against on the grounds of balance on the board, but everybody thought she was a pretty superior candidate. Thank you.
Discussion on item one. Item two now comes before us. Mr. Tessie.
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed an alternate member of the Historic District Commission for a term beginning 4/109 and expiring 3/31/14, Patricia Dillon.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item two has been moved and seconded. Franklin Blumer, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Moderator. The Land Use Committee met with Pat Dillon last Monday evening. She is being nominated as an alternate member of the Historic District Commission. She's a longtime resident of the town, has been active in a number of organizations in town, including the Historical Society of the Town of Greenwich, the Greenwich Land Trust, the Junior League, as well as other private institutions. She has a law degree, practiced law in town for quite a while, has changed careers, and is now heading up a art consultancy organization. Our vote was 11 in favor, none opposed, no abstentions. District three was absent.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
We saw Ms. Dillon, I believe, on the 21st also, excuse me, on the 28th, and we voted for 11-0-0 with heavy endorsement for her abilities.
Discussion on item two. Item five now comes before us. Mr. Tessie.
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed an alternate member of the Inland, Wetlands, and Water Courses Agency for a term beginning 4/109 and expiring 3/31/13, Brian Harris.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item five has been moved and seconded. Mr. Blumer with our Land Use Report.
The Land Use Committee met with Mr. Harris last Monday evening. He is a new appointment as an alternate member of the Inland, Wetlands, and Water Courses Agency. He is presently an architect, having made a midlife career change. He got his architectural degree from Columbia in 2001. He is particularly interested in what he called "sustainable solutions," that is development that is sensitive to environmental concerns. The architectural firm that he works with has been involved in three Greenwich projects: the Dundee School, the Greenwich High School Auditorium, and Greenwich Hospital. Our vote was 11 in favor, none opposed, no abstentions. District three absent.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling.
We met with Mr. Harris on the 21st of April. We voted for him 12-0-0. Again, he was a breath of fresh air, and I think will be a great addition as an alternate. This, by the way, I should say, is an example of how it works. Mr. Harris is replacing Mr. Benton, who was an alternate and being moved up to a regular. And having been trained as an alternate, he now finds himself in a good position to be serving us as a regular. We hope the same for Mr. Harris.
Thank you. Discussion on item five. Item number eight now comes before us. Mr. Tessie.
Resolve that the First Selectman be and is hereby authorized for and on behalf of the town to enter into a lease agreement with the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation for the lease of an approximately .86 acre parcel located between the I-95 southbound entrance ramp and the railroad bridge at the Horse Neck Lane Field Point Road junction.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item eight has been moved and seconded. Mr. Blumer, would you like to give our Land Use Committee report?
Good evening again. This item of land, this very small parcel of land, is, as you're coming along Horse Neck Lane, approaching Field Point Road, it's straight ahead when you get to the traffic light. It's a very narrow sliver of land, which has been used by the Department of Transportation, for example, when they were working on the Arch Street Bridge a few years ago. The town needs land to put stuff, and the town is happy to have this on a very advantageous basis. There's a $500 charge to the state for entering into this lease, but it's a lease that carries no rent with it. Our vote was 10 in favor, none opposed, with one abstention. District two abstained due to concern that the use of the site would cause traffic delays, and the delegate wished to consult with other members of his district before deciding.
Thank you. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, our committee took this item up last Monday evening. Speaking on behalf of this item was Amy Seabert, Commissioner of DPW, along with Jean McLaughlin of the Town Attorney's Office. We are authorizing the First Selectman to enter into a lease whereby Connecticut Department of Transportation will lease this .86 acres to the town. It'll be used primarily as a storage and staging facility. We've also learned that this is a gated facility, which should help us with respect to exposure to liability for another parcel of land that will now be controlled by the town. Our votes on legal order and the merits were the same, 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Dafina with the report of our Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Vince DeMarco.
Oh.
It's okay. No big deal. Good evening, Mr. Moderator and fellow members.
I had the right -- first name right.
It's okay. It's fine. I've been cold worse. The Transportation Committee did take this item up, this lease, and beyond the explanos and a 16 and a half page attachment, committee members were assured by Mr. Crary that the use of the property would not cause traffic or environmental problems, and the vote was 11-0. District four absent.
Thank you. Discussion on item eight. Item 11 now comes before us. Mr. Tessie.
Resolve that the Greenwich Alarm Ordinance is amended as follows.
All right, so this is a resolution amending the alarm ordinance. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 11 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Wells? Doug Wells with our Legislative and Rules Committee report.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, this resolution was addressed to us by Keith Hirsch of the Greenwich Police Department, along with Jim Dane, RTM member and Chairman of the Alarm Appeals Board. The revisions provide for higher registration and user fees for vendors and homeowners, and increases penalties for false alarms. The resolutions also serve to give authority to the BET to make changes to registration and user fees and penalties without further approval by the RTM. If this resolution is passed as drafted, the RTM would no longer have the right to oversee the changes made by the BET. There was no opposition in our committee in raising the user fees and penalties, given the enormity of the problem and the cost of sending out fire equipment and police crews to the false alarm sites. However, our committee was concerned about ceding authority for the penalty provisions under Section 2A-23 to the BET. We, as a committee, felt this authority should remain with the RTM. We did move to delete a paragraph, and so at the appropriate time, I will ask for that opportunity. Our vote as to legal order as amended was 12-0-0. Our vote on the merits as amended was 11-1-0.
Thank you. Dr. Evan Delman, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Town Services met on Tuesday evening with Assistant Town Attorney Wadler. This is the first part of a two-part update of the alarm ordinance. The second part will come to us in the fall, and will give the ordinance additional power to collect the over $80,000 in outstanding fees. Before us is an amendment to update the fees and fines, as well as allow the town to bill for both police and fire response to an alarm. Registration and contractor's fees will go from $10 to $20 per year, and the fire department fees will now coincide with those of the police department. We were informed that legislation and rules will move to delete 2A-23E. We voted 9-0-0 to endorse that motion. One, two, and six were absent. And our vote on the item as amended was also 9-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Mr. Moderator, on page 19 of the call, under paragraph, Section 2A-23, subparagraph E, which begins the amount of penalties and ends without further approval of the representative town meeting, that entire subparagraph E is deleted. Our vote on the motion to delete was 11-1-0.
All right, that being a motion offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. Discussion on the Legislative and Rules Committee. Discussion on the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to amend item 11. We can adopt amendments upon unanimous consent. If there is no objection, that amendment would be adopted. If there is an objection, we will proceed to take a recorded vote. Is there any objection to the proposed deletion of paragraph E of Section 2A-23 of the alarm ordinance? Hearing none, that motion to amend is adopted upon unanimous consent. Discussion on item 11. Item 13 now comes before us, Mr. Tessie.
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Commission on Aging for a term beginning 4/109 and expiring 3/3112, James B. Dougherty.
Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 13 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Isaacson with the report of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We interviewed Mr. Dougherty, and he used to be a member of the Commission on Aging for a term expiring 3/3112. Mr. Dougherty has practiced law in Greenwich for 25 years, and much of his practice has been with elderly clients. He has served on the Greenwich Adult Daycare Center and on TAG, and our vote was 10-0-0. Districts One and Four absent.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with our Appointments Committee report.
Thank you. We met with Mr. Dougherty, Attorney Dougherty, last Tuesday. The vote was 12-0-0. His history of service in the town, particularly in elderly areas, has been long and well recommended, and we certainly would recommend your support.
Discussion on item 13. Item 14 now comes before us, John Crary, Town Administrator.
Resolve that pursuant to State Public Act Number 95-268, an Act Concerning Neighborhood Assistance, the programs set out in explanatory comments and complete applications filed in the town clerk's office are hereby approved for the purpose of encouraging business contributions to nonprofit organizations and governmental agencies providing important services in Greenwich.
Thank you. Will a member move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 14 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Isaacson with the Health and Human Services Report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Crary presented this resolution to our committee. The Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act provides tax credits for businesses that contribute to programs that have received both state and municipal approval. Submitted for approval are 10 programs totaling $765,404, and parenthetically, the number in the explanatory is incorrect, but this number is correct. Unfortunately, it was noted that last year only $10,500 of the tax credits was used. So we had quite a discussion on how do we publicize this and get more use of these funds. We believe that there is an amendment due because it refers to the list in the explanatory, which is not part of the call. So at the appropriate time, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to propose an amendment from our committee. Our vote as amended was 10-0-0. Districts One and Four absent.
Thank you. Mr. Tuthill with the report of our Finance Committee.
Previous speaker, having said everything really needs to be said, has the Finance Committee discussed it and voted 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Isaacson.
The Health and Human Services Committee would propose that in your papers there, after the word "the programs set out in" and "delete," the explanatory comments attached, instead say "Schedule A attached hereto and made a part thereof," and their completed applications as filed. And one further small item down at the end of this, it says "services in the town of Greenwich."
All right, again, that is a motion to amend offered on behalf of one of our committees and does not require a second. Is there any objection to that suggested amendment? Hearing none, that amendment is adopted upon unanimous consent. Discussion on item 14. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item four, I'm sorry, combined items, 1, 2, 5, 8, 11, 13, and 14, and proceed to poll your delegation. While we are voting, we will continue with the remaining items, which are items 3, 6, 7, 10, 12, 17, 18, 19, 21, 22, and 23. Suzanne Geis-Robins, Chair of District Two.
Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM, I would like to make a motion on behalf of District Two to take up item 22 immediately after the combined items and just before item 13. Item 3, I'm sorry. I read it incorrectly.
All right, so you're moving to take up item 22 now. We are done with the combined items.
Yes, sir.
That being offered on behalf of a district, it does not require a second. This is a motion to suspend the rules. It is now before us. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of taking up item 22 now, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
That motion has failed. Item 3 now comes before us. Peter Tessie, First Selectman.
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term beginning 4/109 and expiring 3/3112, Richard Maitland.
Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 3 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports on that item, beginning with our Land Use Committee Report and its
Good evening again. The Land Use Committee met with Richard Maitland at our meeting last Monday evening. He is being reappointed as a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. In addition, we had one present and one former member of the Planning and Zoning Commission at our meeting. Actually, one of those individuals is a member of our committee, and both of them spoke about how Mr. Maitland is a particularly diligent member of the commission, seldom missing meetings and always coming well-prepared, who brings a valuable perspective to the commission. But in our discussion, there was concern expressed that the present composition of the Planning and Zoning Commission lacks balance, that it consists entirely of persons involved in the real estate industry. There are five members of the commission, two of whom are developers, including the chairman, whose career has been in industry, but currently has what has been described as a major development project in Colorado. There are two architects, and the final member is an engineer who services the real estate industry. Our discussion centered on what the Planning and Zoning Commission might have done in recent years to limit the development in downtown and better contain the trend toward oversized houses. The vote, six in favor, four opposed, with one abstention, District Three absent. Those voting no were Districts One, Two, Eight, and Twelve. Those voting no stated that the commission had failed adequately to address the issues with which it has been faced in recent years. District Five abstained, agreeing basically with the comments of those who voted no, but who felt that he could not vote against Mr. Maitland because he's been a particularly diligent member. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with our Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We met with Mr. Maitland on the 28th of April. We had a full discussion with him. The vote was 11-1-0. Enough has been said about Mr. Maitland's ability as an architect. What hasn't been known is that he's the kind of the detail man on the P&amp;Z that catches the little things that slide between the cracks normally. He's very diligent, plus he can read a plan, which is useful, and other things. The person who voted no was, I think, objecting to the philosophy of the P&amp;Z and how they had handled some of their affairs downstairs, in his district. I believe that's correct.
Thank you. Discussion on item 3. Mr. Levine, District 11.
I worked closely with Dick for four years on the commission. He was always meticulously prepared. He made his decisions solely on the facts and the law, our regulations. He is a superb member of the commission. We're very fortunate to have him. He knows, he's in a very select group, in my view anyway, which is that group who truly understands in all its ramifications and details, the building's own regulations and the subdivision regulations. He is a wonderful member of the commission, and we should all support him. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I ask someone to retrieve for me the sign-up lists that are outside the door? Thank you very much. Louisa Stone, District 10.
Good evening. I, as you may know, was on the commission with Mr. Maitland for four years, and I sat in the Land Use Committee to observe, and I sensed the Land Use Committee's frustration. I'm sure we all are disappointed by the amount of development that's gone on in the last 10 or 11 years, but to pin this on Mr. Maitland is really the wrong place because, as an architect, and he's been retired quite a few years, he brings to the commission skills and perceptions that no one else has brought. We saw him point out to the architects of the hospital how their inside plans and their outside plans didn't match.
...governing agreement for providing advanced life support, emergency medical services by and between the Town of Greenwich Town and Greenwich.
Agreement for five years, and our vote was 10-0-0. District Two and Four absent.
Thank you. Doug Wells with the Legislative and Rules Report.
Mr. Moderator, our committee took this up last Monday evening. Appearing for this item was Carolyn Basely of Health and Human Services, along with Charles Tufts, John Strong, and Charles Kaufman, all representing GEMS. We were also helped on this item by Gene McLaughlin of the Town Attorney's Office. His resolution seeks RTM approval to extend the GEMS contract for an additional five-year term. The governing agreement signed in 2001 is not changed in any manner by this resolution, but is merely an extension of its terms. Some of our...
...and what the effect of something is. Basically, they also share something else, which I think with the Finance Committee might be worth mentioning, which is that...
Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number seven, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the results of the vote on the combined items. Those were items 1, 2, 5, 8, 11, 13, and 14. Those in favor, 184. Opposed, 2. Abstaining, 0. Those combined items have carried. All right. Item number 10 is the next item to come before us. Peter Tessie, our First Selectman.
Resolve, be ordained, and enacted by the Representative Town Meeting that the Greenwich Ordinance entitled Chapter 13 Trees and Vegetation of the Greenwich Municipal Code is hereby amended in the following section, as followed, as in the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 10 has been moved and seconded. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, a tiny acorn has transformed into a massive oak. In our discussions, we did note, vote on the merits was 11-0-1. The abstention was cast by Dr. Carlson of District One, who stated concerns about the condition of our town's trees and was unhappy with the provision that requires that a property owner could not remove dead limbs from town-owned properties without obtaining a permit to do so.
Thank you. Karen Sodicon, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. This is, I think, the fourth time this resolution has come before us. Bruce Bayman-Tree Warden was with us at our meeting to discuss that the language had been finally completed by the Law Department and the Legislative and Rules Committee. There was very little discussion except about the penalty clause.
Slow the pace a little so we can get our votes counted. I would like to take this opportunity to remind, and by the way, I welcome all of our viewers watching on Channel 79, and I thank Paul Curtis and Evan Delman, RTM members, who are bringing tonight's meeting to you on Channel 79. But I would like, yes. I would like to take advantage of this opportunity, this being the last meeting before September, and when we meet again in September, the deadline for filing a petition to run for the RTM in the November election will have passed. So I would very strongly like to encourage any person who may be interested in getting on the ballot in November, and all 230 positions are available. If you have any questions as to the process, you can contact any district chair, you can contact me. The RTM directory is online on the town website. But very briefly, all that is required for someone who is not an incumbent, who has met our attendance requirements to get on the ballot automatically, is to get a petition, which is available online. You can simply download it. You put your name at the top, and then get 25 signatures from registered voters in your district. It's advisable to get more than 25 if you're going to file it at the last moment, in case some of the individuals who signed are not properly registered. It is possible to put multiple names from the same district on one petition, or multiple petitions, and the total number of signatures then would be combined. So if anyone has any questions, we want to encourage, we have a lot of spots, that we just happened to fill two vacancies in our district last week, and we had, I think it was five excellent candidates who came out, and it was a shame to have to turn any of them away. In truth, the November election is the easiest time to get on the RTM, and because we have so many positions, it really is not a difficult thing to do. So please, I encourage anyone who has any interest in local affairs, it is a great way to meet people in town and to keep abreast of what is going on in town, and to get a meaningful vote. So please come out and join us. I have the results of the vote on item 3, which is the nomination of Richard Maitland to be a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those in favor, 113. Opposed, 64. Abstaining, 10. That item has carried. I also have the result of the vote on item 8, which is the agreement between the town and GEMS, five-year, I'm sorry. What did I say? All right. The vote on item 6, which is the agreement between the town and GEMS, five-year agreement. Those in favor, 178. Abstaining, 2. I'm sorry. Those in favor, 178. Opposed, 2. Abstaining, 6. Those in favor, 178; opposed, 2; abstaining, 6. That item has carried. All right. We left off with item 10, is that correct?
No.
No, I mean, we finished 10. Did we do 12?
No.
No. So we finished 10. Item 12 now comes before us. Mr. Tessie, our first electman.
Resolved that the RTM accepts the following ordinance, which is hereby enacted and is designated as the Child Safety Zones Ordinance, and is as on the call.
Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 12 has been moved and seconded. Doug Wells with the report of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, this is a resolution seeking approval from the RTM to enact an ordinance that would create child safety zones in the town at places where children are likely to congregate and play. We heard from Officer Hirsch, who is a member of the Community Police Partnership, along with Attorneys Wadler and Fox from the Law Department. We also heard from Ernest Drewples, I had that misspelled in my written notes that went to many of you, who was a town resident. Our committee noted many typographical errors, but more important, we noted some inconsistencies in the definition section of the proposed ordinance, as well as a lack of clear definition of what areas would be designated as child safety zones. Our town attorney, Mr. Fox, pointed out there is presently a bill pending in the Connecticut Legislature concerning residency restrictions for sex offenders, and he stated that it might be wise to review this legislation when it becomes law as guidance in how we fashion this ordinance. Mr. Moderator, I think it might be appropriate to recognize Mr. Fox for that purpose at the appropriate time to discuss that legislation. As I said before, a town resident by the name Mr. Drewples addressed the committee and provided us with a brief history of ordinances that have been enacted by other communities which have been struck down by the courts based on their vagueness and punitive nature. While our community felt that the goals of this ordinance are important, we felt that the wording of the ordinance needs a lot of work, and that we may well want to wait to see what the state legislature does before we move forward on this ordinance. We therefore moved to postpone this item indefinitely, not for the purpose of killing this resolution, but to give the Law Department and the Community Police Partnership plenty of time to address our committee's concern and come back to us at a later date with more carefully worded and defined ordinance. Our vote on the motion to postpone indefinitely was 11-1-0.
All right, there are no other committee reports on this, is that correct? All right, Mr. Wells, why don't you make that motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, the motion will be debatable.
The let's save and rules motion to postpone this item indefinitely was 11-1-0, and I so moved on behalf of the committee.
All right, that being a motion offered on behalf of our committee, it does not require a second. The motion to postpone indefinitely has the effect of killing the item, does not put it off to any particular date. In order for an ordinance like this to come back, it would have to go through normal channels. So it is simply a motion to kill. Now understand that it has the effect of taking those who might be against the item to vote in favor of the motion to postpone indefinitely, and those who are in favor of the item to vote against. So there's a flip-flop with this motion to postpone indefinitely. Please, well, when I call for the vote, I will remind you again. But that motion is debatable, and debate can go to the merits of the item. So discussion on the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to postpone item 12 indefinitely. I do have two individuals who indicated a desire to sign up, but Mr. Fox, did you want to address this item? Wayne Fox, our town attorney.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just briefly, to address the issue that Chairman Wells pointed out, there was some confusion with this at the LNR meeting, and I want to make, for the record, very clear that there has been pending in Hartford for some time what was called Proposed Bill Number 5561, which dealt not specifically with this issue, but dealt with, it was enabling legislation that dealt with certain sexual offenders residing within a certain distance of schools or child daycare centers. And I think the point that we wanted to make way back in March, I believe it was, with our Board of Selectmen, in which we talked about again the other evening, is that it is always, one is always in a better, one is always in a stronger position if, in fact, one has enabling legislation which gives municipalities the authority to take certain actions, and in addition, many times carries with it the potential for a criminal penalty, which is much more severe. The way, as you well know, that legislature acts, it can amend and amend and amend a bill indefinitely and for a long period of time before it funnels down to us. So the purpose in having the discussion on this was in the hopes of having a better bill, a stronger bill, rather than any attempt to weaken it in any way. So that was the purpose for our discussion of that issue. That was the reason why we brought it to the attention of the board, and if, in fact, that comes to pass, I think the municipality would be in a better position than it would otherwise with simply an ordinance and the limited fine that could be imposed. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. All right. Discussion on the motion to postpone item 12 indefinitely.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM. I was asked to speak today by Officer Hirsch, who is the champion of this legislation in town. He asked me to read a letter that was written to the Selectmen for their perusal of the item 12. This is, Dear Mr. Selectman, Greenwich Police Department Neighborhood Resource Office has completed an extensive amount of research concerning the recent trend of creating child safety zones, ordinances throughout the United States. Several municipalities throughout the United States have enacted upon these ordinances to protect the children within their communities from registered sex offenders. We at the Greenwich Police Department, with the support of the Community and Police Partnership, which is CAP groups, believe now is the right time for the Town of Greenwich to draft and implement its own child safety zone ordinance. Attached is a formal proposal that the Neighborhood Resource Office has completed to inform the town government of the existence of such ordinances. The proposal also provides examples of neighboring Connecticut communities such as Danbury, New Milford, and Ridgefield that have implemented the ordinances. And also, as a little bit of a background on the, you know, item 12 speaks for itself, I believe, as far as the legal ramifications go, but as far as the requirements of sexual, to register as a sexual offender, there's Connecticut General Statute 54-252. There's different requirements here. Some of the important things to note is that there's a duration requirement. You must register for 10 years after being convicted and release into the community for nonviolent and crimes against minor victims, and it's a lifetime registration after conviction and release into the community for crimes defined as sexually violent offenses under Connecticut General Statute 54-250. Or for any individual who is convicted of a crime requiring registration, who has a prior conviction of such offense, so he's a multiple offender, he would get a lifetime on the sexual registry. Failure to comply is a Class D felony. There's two ways to determine who's on the sexual offender list there. You can go to the police department in Town of Greenwich and ask to see the list, or you can go online where they'll show you pictures and give you the addresses of the people. In Connecticut, there's a compliance of 92% for sexual offenders. You know, one of the reasons that I came up here to speak was, I have a passion for this, obviously. The police department did recently catch a registered sex offender in Pembroke and arrested him near one of the busiest bus stops in the town. So you can't say that this doesn't happen in our town, because it does, it happens everywhere. There are sexual offenders in the state, let's see, 5,400, 5,046 registered sex offenders in the state of Connecticut. In closing, I'd like to say that I personally don't believe that you can put a price on child safety. These offenders have not, I don't think they've paid their debt to society until they're off the list. And, you know, as Greenwich residents, we should not be allowing Greenwich to be a safe haven for sexual offenders when other towns in the state are making bold statements with legislation on the subject. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. I rise to speak against the motion to kill this motion, really. My name is Sam Romeo. I'm chairman of the Eastern Sector of the CAP Committee. The CAP Committee, it's a community police in partnership with the police department. We worked on this ordinance for about a year and a half. We've had many meetings. Officer Hirsch and also Officer Stuck did extensive research on these. As Jim Bonney has said, there are four of the towns that have this ordinance. It has been passed. They have not been challenged. As far as the state House bill goes, and Senate bill, our bill is not restrictive as theirs. Their is, has a restriction on residency. We don't have that in there. We don't say where they can and can't live. All we want is for the Chief of Police to be the designate of these areas, and these areas are common sense areas, playgrounds, parks where children congregate, skate parks, anywhere where children would congregate. So I don't think that this is going to turn Greenwich into a police state, as some have said, which really I find offensive. It's really throwing a red herring into the issue. I think this is a serious issue. I think it's an issue that anybody has grandchildren, children, brothers, sisters of a young age that could be potential victims, and there have been victims in this town. We picked up some, going through the records that I've gone through, and this information is available to each and every one of you on the internet. And I think that you'll find some cases where you have sex offenders going to different places and speaking out against these ordinances. And guess what? If nobody knows who they are, people listen to them. But for my money, Jim had said that there is 5,000, some over 5,000 sex offenders in the state of Connecticut. Well, we in Greenwich are a border. Our border is Westchester County. There's over 30,000 in Westchester County. How easy is to come into our town? I think that, you know, I've heard a lot about the sex offenders and their rights, but what about our children's rights? What about my grandchildren's rights? Your brother's or your sister's rights? We have rights too, and I think it's about time that we took a stand on this. Now, as far as the Legislative and Rules Committee's motion to postpone indefinitely, the exception I take to is that, you know, in the past, when bills have come, or ordinances have come to that committee, and if there was typos in it or something else, they've worked with the proponents to try to make it better, or even made a motion to defer it to maybe a September meeting or October meeting, and not to permanently kill the item as the way this motion is written. I, for one, would like to see that motion modified. I can't make that motion. One of you can, but if anything, if this doesn't pass tonight, I think the motion should be to have it come back either to a definite point in time, either September or October, and work with the committee to make it a better bill. And I think that this bill, the way it's written right now, just gives the police officer another tool in her toolbox to protect our children. And I have complete faith in our police department. I think they're one of the finest police departments in the state of Connecticut. And to think that they would use this bill or this ordinance to harass anybody is an insult to them, and I think that we shouldn't even think that they would do that. The probable cause would be if someone's lording around an area where children congregate, and they're there for such a long time, and somebody reports them, or they've driven by several times and see the person in the same place, and they have a camera or a video recording device. Give them the probable cause to ask them, hey, what are you doing here? Is your kid here? You don't have a kid here? Why are you here? Because a lot of times, people have been arrested or given a summon of some sort and gone to court, and the first thing you hear from their attorney is, well, what was the probable cause for bringing this gentleman in here? Oh, you had none? Case dismissed. So bingo, we may have prevented, in some cases have prevented, people from being abused or molested. So I, for one, would hope that this motion to postpone indefinitely is, goes down, and then another motion could come forward to postpone it, if you have a problem with it, to make it better to either September or October. And I thank you for your time.
Further discussion on item, on the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to postpone item 12 indefinitely. Peter Tessie, our first electman.
Good evening. The Board of Selectmen took up this item because we believe there was a serious issue presented to us by the Community and Policing Partnership. We felt their efforts over the last year-plus merited consideration and warranted action. Clearly, the document in the form that it's been presented has presented questions. We believe in getting things done and done right. I would request that you vote down the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to postpone indefinitely, which essentially kills this ordinance, and take a more proactive and responsible step of acting on a motion to postpone till your October meeting and have the committee, or the committee that you designate, work with us to come up with an ordinance that is suitable to the majority of the citizens, and most importantly, I think, in speaking for our board, that protects the children of the Town of Greenwich. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone item 12 indefinitely. Jim Buttel, District 8.
Mr. Moderator, I will say, based on what the prior speakers have said, if this motion fails, I will make a motion to refer the item back to Legislative and Rules to bring back to us in October. With an item like this, clearly, we don't want to try to fix it on the floor of the town meeting. And I want to give you one example within the ordinance that is clearly a problem. A speaker before talked about probable cause. Look, under this ordinance, if you're on the sex offender list and you're in one of these designated zones, you don't need probable cause. They know who they are. If they're inside the zone, they're violating the ordinance. Let's look at where we define the safe zones. One of them is schools. We give a specific exemption for people who are on the list going in to vote, but we don't create an exemption for them to attend an event like tonight, or my district meeting, which also meets inside a school. Prior speaker said, what about my granddaughter's rights or my daughter's rights? Folks, it's their rights versus somebody else's rights that leads to lawsuits. No other town has been sued. Well, no other town is Greenwich. If we pass an ineffective ordinance, we will pay the price. So a motion to postpone indefinitely, yes, it kills the item. The proponents can bring it back to us in another form, so it doesn't truly outright kill. They can bring back a perfected ordinance. Either that, or if the motion fails, as I say, I will offer a motion to refer this back to Legislative and Rules.
Mr. Buttel, one moment. Not that I am recommending any action, but I do want everyone to understand the parliamentary procedure here. A motion to postpone indefinitely has the least priority of all motions. If a motion to refer is offered while the motion to postpone indefinitely is pending, the motion to refer takes precedence, and we would then dispose of it. We would need a record vote on a motion to postpone indefinitely, so I just point that out. out to you, and if you have anything further to say.[602.79][602.79](LAUGHTER).
I get the message, Mr. Moderator. Then I will offer a motion to refer this item back to Legislative and Rules with instructions to bring it back to us at our October meeting.
All right. It has been moved and seconded to refer Item 12 to our Legislative and Rules Committee with the instruction that they return it to us by the October meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Buttel? All right. That motion to refer is debatable, but debate now is confined to the merits of the referral, not to the main question. Discussion on the motion to refer to the Legislative Committee, its chairman, Doug Wells.
I'm going to suggest to you that you not refer it back to my committee for a number of good reasons. And following up on what Mr. Buttel said, there are any number of unintended consequences in this resolution, or in this ordinance, that many of you perhaps have not thought about. In addition to the fact that somebody who was convicted and is deemed to be a sexual offender couldn't come to this meeting tonight, you could also have a situation that a sex offender is defined in here as a nonviolent sex offense. That could be a situation where a seventeen-year-old girl and a fifteen-year-old boy have sexual contact with each other, and because of their disparity in the age, that girl could be convicted of a nonviolent sexual offense under the statutes. That means that later on in life, she could have, she could be married, have children. She could not attend the school functions for the ten years that she was on this, on this list. So I think there's enough wrong with this ordinance. You don't want to send this back to people who are volunteers, who are not professionals in drafting legislation of this nature. As Mr. Fox pointed out, I think you need somebody in the state legislature to give us guidance. Then it can go back to the Law Department. The Law Department can then work with the community people and bring us back an ordinance that truly addresses all of these concerns that our committee had, rather than bringing it to us. Start fresh, make it right, bring it back here. We don't need another tree ordinance.
Now, Mr. Wells, do I understand you to be saying that we think the state legislators are better than we are?[759.13][759.13](LAUGHTER).
Not saying that, but I think--
All right, good. I didn't think so.[763.56][763.56](LAUGHTER).
No, but I, to your point, I think that the, there is belief that there will be a lot of discussion and in some legislative history that will come out of that, that will better inform our town.
I understand. Thank you. Further discussion now on the motion to refer to the Legislative and Rules Committee. Vin DiMarco, District 9.
Fellow members, I would just say that it seems to me that the Legislative and Rules Committee could request that the town attorney take a look at this between now and October. I don't understand this. Legislative and Rules is supposed to be the last say, is supposed to give us advice on whether or not we should, we should accept this. So I don't see any reason why they couldn't work with the town attorney's office on this. So I would, I would say that let's, let's go with the referral back to Legislative and Rules.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. Arlene Lamazo, District 6.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, town officials, members of the RTM. If I understood Mr. Fox correctly, and I believe I did, he urged us to postpone this indefinitely so that when it comes back, and we're assuming it will come back, it will not only come back in a better form, but it will come back at a time after the state legislature passes enabling legislation, which would strengthen whatever we pass. Now, that seems to me to be a plus-plus. But we don't know when that enabling legislation will pass. So if you postpone this to October, that may still be too early. If the legislature doesn't act until January, then we should be waiting for this group to bring it back to us, say, in February. In other words, their bringing it back is contingent upon what the state does and when the state does it. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. Mr. Romeo.
Thank you. The Legislative Rules Committee raises some interesting questions, which I'm sure can be answered if they're willing to put in the time, and I'm willing to put in the time with my CAP Committee. With the assistance of the town attorney, I'm sure this thing can be a workable thing. Now, if anybody thinks that the state of Connecticut is going to act rapidly here, while four of the towns in the state have already acted and put some enabling ordinances on their books, the state of Connecticut didn't even pass a budget this year. This bill sat in committee, and I don't even came out of committee. And again, like I say, this bill is not what we're asking for. Not asking for any resident restriction of where they can live. As far as the question went about school function and all, these items and issues were discussed in committee. And I'd be glad to, I don't know why, they never came out in the Legislative Rules Committee, but I'd be glad to sit down. There were exceptions made, and the designate would be the Chief of Police on this stuff. And I think it's a workable bill. I really would hope that this would not die on the vine, like state legislation is dying on the vine. Because we can't even get a price zone changed through the legislature for the last ten years. So let's not wait for the state. Let's be bold. Let's take the step forward, and let's do what we have to do to protect our children. And again, I'd be more than willing to spend the whole summer working on this, when anybody wants to work on it. And I think that the town attorney could be assigned, Mr. First Selectman, to work with us on this item. So please, support the motion to postpone to October. And if it's that enough time, we'll have a lot of heavy lifting done, a lot of the questions will be asked by then. And if it's still not, there's still some more questions, then we could ask for a further postponement. But please, don't let this die on the vine. Thank you.
All right. What is pending before us is a motion to refer to our Legislative and Rules Committee with instructions to bring it back in October. Bob Brady, District 5, to be followed by Ed Diddakis, District 1.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members, guests, friends. I urge you to reject the motion to refer. Our committees serve us best when they review work brought to them by the relevant town departments. If we put the Legislative and Rules Committee in the position of having to draft the legislation, then this is, this is legislation. This is not a council of the meeting resolution. This is real legislation. If we put them in the position of having to draft it, there is no one to review it. Thank you. Vote no.
Mr. Diddakis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. I'm on the Legislative and Rules Committee, and it took us forever on this tree ordinance. It is not the place to rewrite something of this importance. I think this is a great idea, but it is poorly written. It is poorly presented. I also have the opportunity to serve on your Claims Committee. You know, with the language that's in here, it's likely to create lawsuits. So please, send it where it needs to go. Postpone it indefinitely. The Law Department will bring it back. Mr. Tessie will bring it back, and then we'll have something we can truly work for. So please, vote referral down and vote for an indefinite postponement.[1115.08][1115.08](APPLAUSE).
Who has a point of order? Dr. Delman, please state your point of order, which is a statement that there is some rule violation currently underway.
If this is voted down, does it go back to the other?
Yes. The question is, what happens if we vote down the pending motion to refer? We would then revert back to discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely. All right. Are there any other interested speakers on the motion to refer? Since this is a procedural matter, I will call for a voice vote in the first instant. If you are in favor of sending this to our Legislative and Rules Committee so that they can work on it between now and October, actually, they would have to have it ready by the end of September to put it on our October call, you should vote yes. If you are opposed to sending it to our Legislative and Rules Committee, you should vote no. All those in favor of the motion to refer Item 12 to our Legislative and Rules Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
That motion has failed. We are now dealing with the motion to postpone indefinitely. Further discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely. I will call for a record vote. Will the district chairs, please mark your voting cards. Legislative and Rules Committee motion to postpone Item 12 indefinitely. Now, let me just remind you, adoption of this has the effect of killing it. It would then have to come back to us through the normal channels. So if you are in favor of sending this away, then you should vote yes on the motion to postpone indefinitely. If you want to continue discussing this tonight and disposing of it tonight, you should vote no. We will need to await the result of that vote before proceeding further. So I ask the district chairs to please expedite the voting on this motion to postpone indefinitely. I have the result of the votes on Items 7 and 10. I believe those are the two outstanding votes I've not announced. Item 7 was the appropriation of $400,000 to Nathaniel Witherell. Those in favor, 186; opposed, 2; abstaining, 0. Item 10 was a tree ordinance. Those in favor, 179; opposed, 7; abstaining, 2. That item has carried. All right. Now might be an appropriate time if you want to get up and stretch. We will continue as soon as we have the results of this vote on the motion to postpone indefinitely.[1307.21][1307.21](LAUGHTER). I have the results of the vote on the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to postpone Item 12 indefinitely. Those in favor, 133; opposed, 49; abstaining, 8. That motion has carried. That disposes of Item 12. Item 17, now, Mr. Crary, which item was polled? Nineteen? Seventeen. I'm sorry. Item 17 has been polled by its proponents. There were some procedural issues I think that needed to be addressed before it comes to us. Now, that leaves as the remaining items to be disposed of. The three labor contracts, which are Items 18, 23, and 21. And I told you that I would suggest that we combine 18 and 23, which would require a motion to suspend the rules to do. All right. So since Item 18 is our next item, it is my recommendation that we take one vote on Items 18, the Lyuna contract, and 23, the GMEA, since they have similar issues. Is there such a motion to suspend the rules? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine Items 18 and 23 simply for voting purposes. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of suspending the rules and combining Items 18 and 23 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion has carried. So we will now address Items 18, then 23, and then we'll pick up in order 19, 21, and 22. Alcava, Director of Labor Relations.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting. Item 18 is a substitute resolution, resolved at the sum of $18,000 for the fiscal year 2009-2010, being the same as hereby appropriated to carry out the terms of the negotiated one-year collective bargaining agreement between the town of Greenwich and Lyuna Local 136. Further resolved at the representative town meeting of the town of Greenwich, hereby approve such provisions of the agreement, if any, which may be in conflict with any charter provisions, special act, ordinance, rule, or regulation of the town of Greenwich within the meaning of Connecticut General Statute 7474.
Thank you. A member please move the adoption of the resolution. The resolution on Item 18 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports on this, beginning with our Labor Contracts Committee and its chair, Joan Caldwell.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting. As has been indicated by our moderator, Items 18 and 23 are almost identical. They are both one-year extensions of their present contracts, which terminate on June 30th this month. Lyuna has 186 full-time employees, 35 part-time employees. GMEA has 325 full-time employees, 130 part-time. They differ in size. Both of these unions have not yet voted, the membership has not yet voted, on whether or not to accept the, accept the pact that has been worked out by their leadership. However, that vote will take place on June 16th, and we are extremely optimistic that it will be approved. These are concession contracts, that is to say, or concession extensions. That is to say that in the one-year extension, there is to be a zero increase in the general wages. Now, you may recall that several months ago, both our chairman of the BET and our First Selectman said that in order to close the budget gap for fiscal 2010, we were going to have to get some concessions from our employees, particularly a wage freeze, or we were going to have to very seriously look at laying off additional employees, which is an awful experience to have to go through. These two unions have offered a zero increase for the GWI for the year of the extension, which starts July 1st and ends June 30th, 2010. In addition, the Anthem PPO and POS plans that are presently in effect, and which are a bit costly, are going to be replaced for all of these employees by a health systems, a health savings account. Or the employee may continue, if he's already in it, or may elect to sign up to, a Health Net plan, or an HMO. For those two plans, the contribution by the employee will go up from 7% starting July 1, that's in two weeks, to 8% for the year. Now, the savings that we get from the wage freeze for Lyuna is $581,000. The savings we get from GMEA is $560,000. The savings on the insurance for Lyuna is $154,000, and for GMEA, it's $220,000 or about. That's a significant amount of money to be saving in a year when we have to be very prudent. In return for this, the town agrees not to lay off any employees in either of these units for the next year. It is highly unlikely that were layoffs necessary, and we're not sure that they are any longer, we would do it in a haphazard fashion. What we would do is make an extensive study of the employees that might be considered, or the departments, or the services that might, and that recommendations then be discussed among the administration, members of the BET, and the First Selectman, and that should layoffs have to occur, which, again, is, seems doubtful, they would not occur until July 1, 2010. That's when the wage extension and the prohibition go out of being. In addition, the town has agreed to contribute $18,000 to the 401K program for Lyuna, and 57, almost $58,000 to the 401K program for GMEA. There are some other aspects of these, but they're minor. For Lyuna, we have said that there's going to be no more taking home of cars for the weekend or the evening by employees. We have said we have agreed with GMEA to eschew allowance and to an increase in life The Labor Contracts Committee voted unanimously to recommend that you deal with these contracts, that you approve them this evening. Although they have not been approved by the membership, they are concession contracts and represent no expense to the town beyond the nominal contribution to the 401K. Therefore, the Labor Contracts Committee is willing to set aside past precedent and recommend that the RTM act before the fact. recommend that the RTM act before the fact, that is, before the vote of the membership. Now, town meeting has a couple of other options. It can vote to postpone these items indefinitely, which will have the same effect as passing them. Since the law requires that a town meeting reject a contract within 30 days of its being forwarded to the town meeting, otherwise, the contract becomes valid. The town meeting might also vote to hold a special meeting after the employees have voted. That would be at the end of June. Our feeling was that a special meeting at the end of June would not be looked upon too favorably by this membership, that not only is it costly, but it is very likely we would not get the same turnout we have here tonight. Therefore, it is the committee's earnest recommendation that you approve these two proposed settlements tonight.
Bob Tuthill with the report of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, terrific to follow Ms. Caldwell. Basically, what can I say? Item 18, the Lyona contract came before the Finance Committee last Monday, and, by the way, you should be aware that if you look at your call, that this is something that was put in as incorrect. It should be a sum of $18,000 for the fiscal year 2009-10. Other than that, we voted for it 12-0-0. Item 23 came up tonight because, as Ms. Caldwell mentioned, this only was agreed to last Thursday. The vote in Finance was 10-0-0 with District 5 and 11 absent. It's very similar to the Lyona contract. It's a one-year extension that gives up the general wage increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item 18. Item 23 now comes before us. This is combined with 18.
Item 23, resolved at the sum of $57,750 for the fiscal year 2009-2010, being the same as hereby appropriated to carry out the terms of the negotiated one-year collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Greenwich and the Greenwich Municipal Employees Association. Further resolved, the representative town meeting of the Town of Greenwich hereby approve such provisions of the agreement, if any, which may be in conflict with any charter provisions, special act, ordinance, rule, or regulation of the Town of Greenwich within the meaning of Connecticut General Statutes, Section 7474.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 23 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Brady, the Education Committee report.
Good evening again. The Education Committee was referred to item 23. We met tonight jointly with Appointments, Town Services, Finance, and ourselves to hear the discussion of 23. We have absolutely nothing to add to the reports that Joan gave. Our vote was four in favor, three opposed, with one abstention. Districts 3, 4, 6, and 12 were unrepresented. The abstention was due to the person coming in late. The three no votes principally objected to the unreality surrounding this agreement compared to the private sector, which is characterized as no raises, no hiring, empty offices, and empty desks. Their concern, we are setting up a situation where the town will have to give up much to get the no-fire language removed from subsequent agreements. Again, our vote was four in favor, three opposed, one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tuthill, you have given the Finance Committee report, correct? Anything further to add, Ms. Caldwell? Okay, and that leaves Dr. Dellman with the Town Services report.
You've heard it all. We voted 7-0-0, 2-7-8, 10 and 11 were absent.
Thank you. Michael Petroselli, Chairman of our Budget Overview Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is not a budget report, so is this open discussion now, or not?
No. I was asking for committee reports, but don't go far, because I think we are now going to open it up for discussion on item 23. Mr. Petroselli, District 12.
Thank you. I wasn't going to talk on this item tonight, but there's one point I do want to make. The Budget Overview Committee did not take up this item, so everything I say right now is my view, and not necessarily that of the Budget Overview Committee. The one point I do want to make is although this is positive for the town, we don't have any general wage increases this year, we're gaining some medical cost benefits, the one thing I do want to point out is there are other organizations locally, like the Greenwich Hospital, that have taken the time and have gone through the exercise of examining how they operate. We've probably all read the article in the Greenwich Post. I spoke with the senior director at the hospital. The hospital spent nine months with 15 weeks of intensive review of the operations, and they were able to reduce their employment by 8%. They reduced operating spending by about $20 million, and they tell me they're able to deliver more and better products to their clients. Granted, it's a hospital, but what we do have in common is we're both in Greenwich, we both serve the people of Greenwich, and we've both experienced reduced revenues. So all I'll say is, please, make sure we think about this as the first step in solving our budget challenges. It's not the last step, it's the beginning. We still need to reduce the amount of money we spend on services and operating the town, predominantly with a focus on employment costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on item 23. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, combine items 18 and 23, and proceed to poll your delegation? The next item to come before us is item 19. David Ormsby, Chairman of the Board of Nathaniel Witherell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, on behalf of the Board of Nathaniel Witherell, we would ask for your consideration of the resolution which is set forth under item 19 in the call for this meeting. The gist of the resolution would permit Nathaniel Witherell to account financially for its operations on a so-called revolving fund basis. There are precedents in this town for that treatment. The Griffith Golf Course financial statements are presented in that fashion, consolidated in the Town of Greenwich financial statements.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Could I continue?
Well, we need to get the resolution before it's procedurally first, and then we'll hear committee reports, and then if you want to address us, I will recognize you.
Thank you.
Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 19 has been moved and seconded. May we have the committee reports, beginning with Jerry Isaacson, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Lloyd Banksen presented this proposal for the revolving fund to our committee. Unlike other town departments, the Witherell has significant revenue as well as expenses, but the present reporting does not give a true picture of the financial impact of the facility. This revolving fund, as David Ormsby just said, this format would be similar to what we already use for the Griffith Golf Course and for the Public School Lunch Fund. By the way, there is an error in the call for item 19, in that the BET has not yet approved this plan. When we first examined this, we passed an amendment that we were going to present tonight to make it contingent upon BET approval. Since that time, we have learned from the Law Department that that's not necessary, and indeed, probably not wise to do it that way. This body, if they approve this item on the call, and the BET at June 15, I believe it is, meeting approves it as well in the same language, then it's passed, and it's done. So, we met this evening to rescind our proposed amendment, and we voted 8-0-0 to do that, and Districts 1, 2, 10, and 4 were absent. Then we proceeded to vote on the item itself, and the vote there was 7-2-0. 2, 10, and 4 were absent. Two no votes felt that we should do this in proper order, and we should wait for the BET, but the majority of the committee felt otherwise, and said, "Let's do it now. It will not be effective until the BET approves it."
Thank you. Bob Tuthill, Vice Chair of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee met on this last Monday, and the vote was 11-0-1. The one vote on it that was abstained was because of the fact that the BET had not acted on it yet. Basically, a little bit of background. This body had appointed a special committee called Special Committee Nathaniel Witherell that had looked at, you know, a previous proposal for building, et cetera. We must have spent three years at least on that committee. And one of the frustrations we had was that we didn't have a real good handle on how it was doing, because the town's accounting is such that certain expenses do not show against revenues. Basically, the Law Department, IT, other things like that, are just plain overhead expenses. And what this would do is the same thing as the Griffith, is give us a C then, and this is something that the board has brought forward, is basically, you'd be able to look at it and say, "Aha, they made X amount last year, and this year," you know, et cetera, or they lost something. So you could really tell something. It would be a pro forma's business statement, and it would be really worthwhile. Basically, though, I want to make sure one thing's understood. The Budget Director has told us that if this passes, we still are going to have item 7, the $400,000 expense that we came, that we dealt with earlier this evening, because we still would be required to deal with it the way we have been. And that's, you know, finance procedure, and it can't be changed. But at least, when someone says, "We want some more money," there would be a pro forma's statement here that would hold up and say, "See? We're really doing well financially." This is the problem. I think it's a great advantage. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Wells with our Legislative and Rules Committee report.
This matter was presented to us by Ray Augustine of Nathaniel Witherell. Accompanying him was Bruce Dixon. Mr. Augustine pointed out there was a factual error in the call, and the resolution has not been approved by the BET. So our committee amended the provision by deleting the phrase in the first paragraph, the language, "and approved by the Board of Estimate and Taxation." Our vote on that was 12-0-0. We took up the item as amended. Our vote on the resolution as amended as to legal order was six in favor, three opposed, three abstention. Our vote on the merits was 5-4-3. The negative votes and abstentions were cast because of the fact that the BET had not approved of this resolution before it was brought to our committee. However, none of the committee members voiced any reservations about what it is that Nathaniel Witherell is trying to accomplish in this resolution.
Thank you. Discussion on item 19.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The resolution which is contained in item 19 was prepared by the town's Law Department at the request of the Finance Department. It deals solely with the financial presentation of Nathaniel Witherell's results of operations. It has no substantive consequences to Nathaniel Witherell's status as a town department. Nathaniel Witherell will continue to be subject to all town policies, including purchasing, payroll, budgeting. Budgets continue to be submitted to the BET and the RTM for approval. All revenues generated by Nathaniel Witherell continue to be deposited in the General Fund of the town, where they remain available for any lawful purpose of the town. This proposal to permit operations to be accounted for on a revolving fund basis has been under discussion with the BET and the Finance Department for nearly two years, and it is our belief that it enjoys the support of both organizations. In fact, on May 14, the Audit Committee of the BET voted 4-0 to approve the revolving fund status for Nathaniel Witherell. Approving our request for revolving fund status has, in our judgment, significant advantages to the town. It will provide a clearer, more transparent financial presentation of our results of operations than does the current financial presentation, with its emphasis primarily on expenditures. It will clear up the confusion of whether Witherell operates profitably, and by the way, we do. It will show clearly Witherell's contribution to or support from the General Fund. But perhaps the most important aspect of it is, it will save our staff endless hours of converting our results of operations from a town-required format to the reporting format required by the Medicare and Medicaid systems, which represent 70% of our revenues. We are before you this evening because this is your last meeting before the commencement of our next fiscal year. It would be our hope to have the revolving fund status in place by July 1. It is my expectation that the BET will consider, and I trust endorse this revolving fund method of reporting at its regular meeting on June 15. If it does not, your adoption of this resolution will have no effect, since revolving fund status requires the approval, prior approval of the BET. But RTM adoption of this resolution will send a strong message of support to the board and the staff of Nathaniel Witherell, who are on track to report to the town a second consecutive year of profitable operations. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Stephen Walco, Chairman of the BET.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, item 19 now before you, requesting the creation of a revolving fund for Nathaniel Witherell. This issue has been extensively discussed by and between the BET and Nathaniel Witherell Board for several months, and most recently, this past month, for a second reading. It is anticipated that the BET Budget and Audit Committees will review this issue for the second time in two months, and make its recommendation to the full BET for its meeting next Monday, June 15. Since the BET only acts as a full board, I cannot comment on whether the item will receive approval from the BET. I can, however, inform you that the BET, most of its members, if not all, have expressed a desire for greater transparency in how Nathaniel Witherell operates relative to its revenues and expenses. This item will assist us in accomplishing the task. I can also inform you that the BET has commenced its review of Nathaniel Witherell's long-term business plan. We intend to be working over the summer to ensure that the BET is as comfortable with the accuracy and reasonableness of the long-term business plan, as is the Nathaniel Witherell Board. So I hope my comments have at least cleared up some ambiguity relative to the timing of this. Obviously, it's not a perfect situation, but it's one that we hope to be able to live with and set Nathaniel Witherell on its right track for accounting purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on item 19. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item 19, and proceed to poll your delegation. The next item to come before us is item 21. Alcava, Director of Labor Relations.
Item 21, resolved at the sum of $31,000 for the fiscal year 2009-2010, being the same as hereby appropriated to carry out the terms of the negotiated three-year collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Greenwich and Teemsis Local 456. Further resolved at the representative town meeting of the Town of Greenwich, hereby approve such provisions of the agreement, if any, which may be in conflict with any charter provisions, special act, ordinance, rule, or regulation of the Town of Greenwich within the meaning of Connecticut General Statute 7474.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 21 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with Joan Caldwell, Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee? Caldwell, Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee?
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting. Item Twenty-One is a three-year contract with Teamsters Local 456. It is an actual contract, exactly like those that you've been accustomed to seeing and acting on for the past three or four decades. There are 312 full-time employees in the group, 90 part-time employees. That number is exclusive of Teamsters working at Nathaniel Witherell, with whom we negotiate separately. They're negotiated with, as a nursing home, as opposed to a municipal entity. This contract was approved by the membership last Thursday, June fourth. It is a three-year contract. The first year calls for three and a quarter percent increase in the general wages. That year began on July first, 2008. It's, the year is almost over. It is the same increase that we gave to other employees for, other employees of the town for the same period, and we believe that fair is fair. What you give to one, you give to the other. In the second year of the contract, which begins this coming July first, there is a zero increase in the GWI, which results in a savings to the town of approximately $634,000. In the third year, there is a wage re-opener. Effective July one this year, there will be a change in the co-pay for drugs. The co-pay will go for, will go to $5.25 and $40 from $5.15 and $30. Now, that's a significant savings. Effective January one, 2010, six months from now, Anthem PPO and POS will be replaced by the high deductible, higher deductible health savings account. This is exactly the same thing as you saw in Teamsters and Lyuna, same provisions. The employee premium for the Health Net POS and for the HMO, should an employee already be in it or elect to go into those programs, will go from seven percent to eight percent. The projected savings from all of the insurance will be $248,000, almost $249,000 in fiscal year 2010. In addition, retirees from this group who were hired on or after July first, 1999, will have their retirement health allowance replaced by a health savings account into which the town and the employee will each contribute about a half of 1% of the base salary, their base salary. This will take approximately 125 employees currently calculated as part of our OPEP fund out. They'll be under health savings accounts, and that represents a fairly significant savings to the town. In return for this, the town agrees to no layoffs from the group, again, identical to what we did with Lyuna and with GMEA. And the town will contribute $31,000 to the 401K program. The Labor Contracts Committee voted this evening unanimously to recommend your approval.
Thank you. Bob Tuthill with the Finance Committee report.
Mr. Moderator, once again, very little to say after Ms. Caldwell gets finished. Basically, Finance considered this last Monday. The vote was twelve, zero, zero.
And Mr. Dr. Delman with the Town Services Report.
We voted ten, zero, zero. One and two absent.
Thank you. Discussion on Item Nineteen. I'm sorry. No, we're on Twenty-One. Discussion on Item Twenty-One. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item Twenty-One, and proceed to poll your delegation. I have the results of the vote on the combined labor contracts, Lyuna, Item Eighteen, and GMEA, Item Twenty-Three. Those in favor, one thirty; opposed, forty-three; abstaining, seventeen. Those two items have carried. I also have the vote on Item Nineteen, which is the revolving fund for Nathaniel Witherell. Those in favor, one eighty-seven; opposed, three; abstaining, two. That item has carried. We are now voting on Item Twenty-One, and the last of our call items tonight now comes before us. And before we get to that, Mr. Tuthill, District Four now.
Mr. Moderator, I move--
Why don't you come forward, Mr. Tuthill, please? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that discussion on Item Twenty-Two be limited to three pieces, three minutes per speaker, per motion. Thank you.
All right. A motion to limit debate such as this is not itself debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. I will tell you that there are approximately 30 speakers who have signed up. So I will now call now. Yes, Mr. Boutel, please state your point of information. That is not his motion. The motion is three minutes per speaker. If you are in favor of that when I call for the vote, you should vote in favor. If you are not in favor of that particular limit, you should vote no. All those in favor of Mr. Tuthill's motion to limit all speakers to three minutes per motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion has carried, so all speakers now are on notice that there is a three-minute limit on debate. All right. On Item Twenty-Two, and I will now call for Item Twenty-Two. May we have that resolution? Diane Fox, our Town Pla, who's going to offer the resolution? Mr. Heller, Don Heller, Chairman of our Planning and Zoning Commission?
I have to, I have to call the resolution. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and for the resolution, number Item Twenty-Two, to be as follows: To consider and act upon the following resolution requested by the Planning and Zoning Commission as approved on their May twelfth, 2009 public meeting. Resolved that the 1998 Plan of Conservation and Development, approved by the representative town meeting on April thirteenth, 1998, is hereby repealed. Be it further resolved that the Plan of Conservation and Development, 2009, is hereby, and this is a revised motion, is hereby approved as submitted, and the 2002 plan dated May 2002 and adopted by the RTM in September 2002. The Grass Island Master Plan, adopted by the RTM in 1990. The Planned Housing Design designation on the Post Road from the Mayanus River east to the Stanford border and from Edgewood Drive west to the New York border, and amendment to the 1964 Land Use Map and Plan, and the Sewer Boundary Map dated May 2000 and adopted by the RTM in September eighteenth, 2000, remain in force as approved.
All right. Ms. Fox, do I understand that you are offering a substitute resolution that it just has one word change?
That is correct, Mr. Moderator.
And that's the word adopted in the second resolved, second line of the second resolve? That is removed, and the word approved is in its place, correct?
That is correct, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? The substitute resolution on Item Twenty-Two has been moved and seconded. Now, we will get committee reports, and then we will have discussion on the item. Mr. Dr. Delman, you have a procedural motion you wanted to offer before we do that. Evan Delman, District Nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move we limit debate to forty minutes on top of the committee reports.
All right. Is there a second? That motion is in order. What is now, it has now been moved and seconded to limit the total discussion on Item Twenty-Two to forty minutes, and that time would begin after we heard all the committee reports. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Once again, a motion to limit debate is not itself debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. Yes, Mr. Von Keisling?
I'm not sure because it seems there's a conflict between the two options.
No, there is no conflict. If, you did hear me correctly, that with the speaker list that I had put out, we do have approximately 30 individuals who signed up or otherwise told me they intended to speak. Each, according to the limit on debate that we have already adopted, would be entitled to 30 minutes. Obviously, the, I'm sorry, three minutes. Woo! Excuse me. Each would be entitled to three minutes, and if they all took that, that, of course, would give us an hour and a half. Now, that is not to say we, we could not adopt an overall limit on debate as well. What effect that would have would, you know, at the end of, if we were to adopt a 40-minute overall limit, at the end of that time, we would either extend it, which we would have the ability to do, or anyone who had not been reached would not have an opportunity to speak. All right. Yes?
Another would be the 30 people on the list would only take one minute each, and-- Mr. Von Keisling, we all know what the issues are here. All right, I am going to call for, excuse me, I am going to call for a voice vote on Dr. Delman's motion to limit overall debate to 40 minutes after the committee reports. If you are not in favor, you vote no. We only need one-third of those opposed to defeat this motion. It requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of limiting debate, overall time of debate to 40 minutes following the committee reports on Item Twenty-Two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
(laughing). All right. Let's have a rising vote. All those in favor of limiting the overall debate to 40 minutes, please rise. Whoa. All right, thank you. All those opposed, please rise, and only members, of course, are entitled to vote. All right, that motion has failed for lack of a two-thirds majority. All right, may we have the committee reports on this item? Who is going to give us our? Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Attorney Wetmore addressed our committee on this item. He addressed a concern that some have voiced that the town's proposed POCD does not conform to state rules concerning such a plan. Attorney Wetmore said that the town's POCD does not have to conform because of the town's home rule provisions. While the town has adopted and is bound by the state's zoning provisions, the town has never adopted the state's planning functions. We also addressed concerns brought to our committee by Alan Small concerning the fact that there was a sense of meeting resolution passed in 1998, which required periodic reviews and revisions to the 1998 POCD. Mr. Small provided us a copy of that sense of the meeting resolution, which was distributed to our committee members. We also confirmed that while there may not have been any meaningful changes to the 1998 POCD, Franklin Blumer confirmed that the meetings had, in fact, occurred. None of our committee members believed that any inadequacies in the procedures set out in the 1998 POCD would serve to create a situation where the, this presidency POCD would not be in legal order. Attorney Wetmore was also asked whether the fact there had been changes to the report that was approved on May sixth by the Planning and Zoning Board, which changes had been incorporated into the May twelfth POCD. Mr. Wetmore responded he understood there were changes made, but the changes were not substantive in nature, but were merely correcting scriveners, errors, and grammatical mistakes and similar minor changes. However, neither Attorney Wetmore nor anyone else could say specifically whether the changes had, what changes had been made. Based on Attorney Wetmore's understanding that the changes were not substantive in nature, he provided his legal opinion that the POCD was in legal order. We made two revisions to the resolution. However, Ms. Fox made the first one, which is to change the word "adopted" to "approved." The second, to address the concern about the differences between the May sixth document that was passed and the May twelfth document that is before this committee, was to insert the words "May 12" in the second page, second line of the second resolve clause, so that it would read "May 12, 2009." We took two votes on the matter. Our vote as to legal order was ten, one, one. Sorry, that's incorrect. Our vote on legal order was eleven, zero, with one extension. We also took a vote on the merits. Our vote was three in favor, eight opposed, one abstention. Districts eight, nine, and 12 were in favor of the proposal.
Thank you. Before continuing, let me announce the vote on Item Twenty-One, which is the Teamsters Contract. Those in favor, one sixty; opposed, twenty-six; abstaining, three. That item has carried. Bob Tuthill with the Finance Committee report.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee met last Monday. We had the benefit of Don Heller, the Chairman of P&amp;Z, and Diane Fox, the Town Planner. Basically, to sum it up, I mean, people said, "Well, I'm not so sure. It's everything I would have liked." But one of the things that was pointed out to us is the commission is five voting members and three alternates, and they have to make some compromises. And basically, I think the committee looked at it, and some of the people who were favorable, the vote was seven, one, four. And I'll explain the negative and the abstentions in a minute. I think some of the positive votes had to do with saying, "Well, I guess you can't always get every, all the perfection that you would like about something." We had, the no vote clearly said it didn't address the concerns of district. That was District Two. We had two districts that said they really wanted to see and talk at their district meetings to find out how the district felt, whether this really served the district well or not, and they didn't want it to commit until that time. And we had another one who said, "Hey, why are we even talking about this? It's really not finance-oriented, so let's kind of not vote on it." And I said, "No, that's out of order." So, again, the vote was seven, one, four.
Thank you. Next. Franklin Blumer with the report of our Land Use Committee.
The Land Use Committee took up this item at our meeting last Monday evening. That meeting had been preceded by a considerable amount of effort on the part of the officers of the committee, attending, reviewing the earlier drafts of the POCD, attending meetings of the public hearings that were held on the draft, and preparing a letter of advice, memorandum of advice to the members of the committee, which I think you should all have received. It was circulated via email to the officers of the various standing committees and districts. It was also passed out at the meetings that were held at the districts and the committee meetings. So I'm not going to go through that. I'm anticipating that you all have it. It did reflect the majority of those who voted. Our vote was four in favor, seven opposed, with no abstentions, and those who voted against the, the plan, adoption, approval of the plan, went on and voted to adopt that memorandum, which is dated May 28, as I say, you should have it, as a statement of their reasons for-- is dated May 28, as I say, you should have it, as a statement of their reasons for doing so. In addition, District 12, the delegate from District 12, felt that the sewer boundary map, which is in the plan in a sort of small-scale form, contains errors. He had been on the committee that actually prepared that, and he felt that it contained errors and had not been adopted by the RTM, as stated in the resolution. Those voting no were districts 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 8, and 12. I’m just going to summarize in the briefest way what the memorandum stated, which reflects the position of those voting no. It was felt that the draft plan did not reflect public opinion on key issues. It was thought that a more effective plan would result in cost savings to the town. In other words, if we planned well, we’d save money. Thirdly, the failure of the town to plan effectively has long been recognized. Finally, not finally, but next point, recommendations of a special committee that looked at the interaction of the Plan of Conservation and Development and the CIP process, certain of those recommendations, there were 12 in all, four of them applied directly to the POCD, none of those had been followed in this POCD. Finally, that the respective roles of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the executive branch, and the RTM are spelled out in the charter, and that the checks and balances that are reflected in what the charter provides are not followed in this plan. And finally, that the adoption of this plan is an opportunity to initiate a more effective planning process, which, if we don’t seize the opportunity now, we’ll not likely have for another 10 years. The conclusion of the majority of our committee then was that it would be better not to approve this plan. If we did not do so, the 1998 plan would remain in effect. That plan, although it clearly needs updating, is better written, better articulates the goals, and, most importantly, better reflects public opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Sodicon with our Parks and Recreation Committee report.
Good evening. Diane Fox and Donald Heller were present, along with Bob Brady, so we had both positions represented at our meeting Tuesday night. We had been to the joint session that had been held earlier and had Franklin’s handout. Specific discussion took place on basically a couple of topics during our meeting. One were the R6 zoning issues, and the second one was the implementation committee that was proposed. Questions were how would it be structured, who would be on it, would it meet quarterly, and would it issue an annual report? There was, wanted assurance on how that would function. Many of the delegates really didn’t want to commit to a position regarding the plan until they had gone to their district meetings. They wanted to be supported and united as a district in their voting tonight. Therefore, there were many votes against and abstaining. Our votes were 4, 1, 7. District 1 abstained, feeling the downtown area is in their district and that there’s too much development going on without people really having a handle on it and a handle on the environmental issues. District 2 abstained, wanting to vote with her district. Four abstained, issues environment, affordable housing, and R6 zoning. Five abstained, confused about the process itself. Seven abstained, her district has doubts and agrees with Franklin and wants to vote with her district. Eight voted no. Not his position to represent his district, did not like the overall tone of the plan, too dictatorial. District 9 abstained, did not want to vote against the plan, wanted to wait to see what would happen at the district meeting. And District 12 abstained, wanting to see how their district felt. Thank you.
Jerry Isaacson with the Health and Human Services report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We attended the joint meeting with other Tuesday night committees and then adjourned for our own discussion. Most of our discussion centered around two points. The 1998 plan has stronger language with regards to updates of the plan. And two, while young people were heard and made a number of suggestions, their input was not acknowledged in the plan, and our vote was 3, 8, 0. District 4 absent. The negative votes revolved basically about those two points.
Thank you. Mr. Brady with the Education Committee report.
Good evening again. The Education Committee met last Monday night. We had 10 members present. Districts 1 and 12 were absent. The vote was three in favor, four opposed, three abstaining. The abstentions were districts 4, 9, and 10 indicated they wanted to hear what their district’s discussion before committing. The favorables were 3, 8, and 11. Opposed were 2, 5, 6, and 7. The major points of opposition are that the plan lacks clarity. As one member said, “It’s basically anything you want to do, to see in it. It is insufficiently specific.” I’m not going to try to wrap myself around specificity. It lacks support for the CIP. The link that the RTM asked for two years ago isn’t there. In terms of some of the specifics of the plan, it doesn’t deal well enough with drainage and water. The 98 plan is better. It doesn’t offer much in the way of land protection. There is really nothing in there that would dedicate any of the town land or reserve it from uses we might find objectionable. And it doesn’t deal with large houses, which is particularly important in the downtown, our lower districts. Again, three in favor, four opposed, three abstentions. Thank you.
Mr. Von Keiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, the Appointments Committee discussed the proposed POCD at some length in its February meeting, anticipating the March RTM. The Appointments Committee reached a consensus of approval for the RTM adoption of the POCD. While there are a few differing areas of concern by some members, the overall benefit deserves support, as felt. We took it up again on our agenda last Tuesday, and it was the will of the committee not to discuss it further. They thought that their decisions would stand. Thank you.
Thank you. David Melick with the report of our Public Works Committee.
Thank you, members. It’s late, I’m tired, so forgive me if I stumble. We met in joint session with land use committees and others last Monday night and the first. After that hour-long session, we didn’t retire, but we adjourned upstairs to the engineering room to talk for another hour. The general consensus of the group was that the POCD as presented was organized sufficiently specific, but not overly so, and what was actually well-received was the clearly defined accountability and responsibility for implementation of the plan. And one real point that was made was that it was a much bigger improvement over the original draft that couldn’t be followed and was very challenging. So, the rewrite in that respect was a positive. That being said, though, there were some real key issues that have arisen, some with the document itself, some with the process. As noted in the general session, the Chamber of Commerce, which is a private body, really has no point being listed as a lead entity on a recommendation in a public document, period. They can be a support entity because they have interests. However, they are not elected. They don’t belong on the list. There were clearly some omissions and key items that had been discussed in public meetings and so forth, some specific interests, some things that are very specific to individuals, but some are very broad regarding parks and so forth that perhaps could have been included. But what started to develop in our conversation was that there was apparently clear resistance to accepting some apparently fair points that were made in this spring regarding the plan. But there was counter to that, a clear statement of sole authority on the part of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is, in fact, true. This is their role, this is their document, it comes to us for up or down vote, period. However, I think that got the committee discussing a little bit of, well, why are we having so much trouble at this point in time? We have a stalemate. We asked, there was a large group of people who asked for more to be input into the document. There were some minor changes, however, as I think we’ll hear, there were some, there were no, there were a number of items that were not included in the document. However, the committee viewed this in terms of our authority, or the current authority and the charter, and how the process is established, and we’re not going to change that on the fly. It is what it is. The document is here, and is it something that is worthy of our vote? We did vote on the item, and I’ll get to that in a second, but it appeared that there’s a real problem with the process. And the process seems to be that the power to develop this document is intertwined with the ongoing issues and the difficulties that the zoning commission has in terms of reviewing plans and so forth, as opposed to strategic planning. And it was general consensus among the committee that we have talked about splitting P from Z so we can strategically plan properly, have proper charrettes for neighborhoods, have real input, and develop a long-term plan. And I think it’s a difference of skill sets that you have between zoning folks, who are very objective and so forth, and you have planners, who it is, it’s a real profession. Katie Blankley is one. Diane is one on her own as well. So, it’s time that we consider that, and there are impacts to that. There’s budgetary impacts that we have to live with. But if we want a better POCD, it may be time that we finally codify, take the time to change the charter, and get this done right, and move forward. That being said, it is 2009. It is not 1998. We voted 9, 1, and 1. District 4 was absent. The one no vote was there was a concern for implementability and also an imbalance between backcountry and the coastal zones. District 12, District 2 was the no vote. District 12 was very clear and adamant about there was no attempt to reverse some of the rampant commercialization, as was noted, the eight banks in Koskab, and that is how we left it. Thank you for your time.
Michael Petrosely with the Budget Overview Committee report.
Hi. The Budget Overview Committee took this, I know it’s May 28 meeting. Don Heller, Diane Fox, Peter Berg, Franklin Blumer were all there to participate. Steve Walker was also in attendance for another issue, but we drew him into this conversation. Our vote was zero votes in favor, four against, five abstentions, three absent. The districts that were absent were 1, 2, and 9. The abstentions were basically about whether the question of whether the Budget Overview Committee should be voting on this item at all. Thank you.
Ben DiMarco with the Transportation Committee report.
I’m not going to be last this time because it appears that Town Services’ report is even shorter than mine. The committee met at a regular time, and we had Mrs. Fox and Mr. Heller with us to answer questions. Following their short presentation, we did so, mostly regarding how the P&amp;Z would proceed as the town’s planning agency, based on the recommendations of the current draft document and on the lack of planning activity following the adoption of the 98 POCD. Mr. Heller explained that the determination that the previous biennial review procedure was not practical, and also that the commission and staff did not have the time and manpower to focus on planning and consider revisions on a regular basis. The plan instead recommends that responsibility, that responsibility to move forward with actions of the 2009 plan be taken by an implementation committee chaired by the First Selectmen, and that other special committees be established to study and develop public consensus on critical matters left unresolved. These committees, along with the First Selectmen, BET, RTM, and the public, could then come forward to the P&amp;Z with recommendations, with recommended amendments to the plan or land use regulations for consideration. Our vote, six in favor, two against, with two abstentions. District 4 was absent for the whole meeting, and District 8 was not present at the time of the vote. The no votes, District 9 and 10 voted no due to opposition to the review, implementation, and update processes recommended in the plan, and the abstentions. District 12 was not comfortable with the plan not taking a firm stance on flood mitigation action, and District 1 wanted to continue studying the 2009 draft plan and the 98 plan, feeling that there was more to be learned from the past.
Evan Delman with the Town Services report.
Much briefer. Town Planner Fox was detained and other committees for several hours. Town Services listened to the opposition’s pleas for one hour before we voted 9, 1, 0 to take no action. One and two were absent. District 11 was the no vote, and they wanted to know how the committee felt at that time.
Doug Wells with our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Just bringing back the motion to revise the item 22 in the second paragraph, the “be it further resolved” paragraph, in the second line, after the word “development,” insert the date, dated May 12, so it’ll read on that second line, “Development dated May 12, 2009.”
Is there any objection to that motion to amend offered on behalf of our Legislative and Rules Committee? Hearing none, that may be adopted upon unanimous consent. That concludes our committee reports. Discussion on item 22. Donald Heller, Chair of our Planning and Zoning Commission. I remind all speakers that we have a three-minute limit in effect.
I wish I was a committee chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, our purpose tonight is to recommend you accept the proposed Plan of Conservation and Development. Hopefully, with your favorable vote, we can move forward with a sense of positive and accepted accomplishment. We want to review with you the major issues of today and how our plan moves forward where there is public acceptance, plus how we attempt to build consensus when there is none. The 1998 plan is a good reference point. It was great for its time, a truly visionary document, but problems have developed since then. We have been confronted with overbuilding, tear downs, and substantially more flooding, to cite just a few examples. Our proposed 2009 plan is meant to serve as a guide for decisions that Greenwich will make in its land use planning for the next 10 years. Where there is general agreement on both problem identification and thought-through situations, the plan provides for present and future action steps. For example, we propose a 15% for the acquisition of open space, up from the present 13%. By the way, there was no provision in the 1998 plan for a specific goal. Now, we do not specify, identify privately-held parcels of open space because the commitment of the town to purchase any particular property may raise the cost substantially, such as happened with the Water Company lands. We, as planners, choose planning goals that could be achieved and provide sensible methods in the plan to get there. We also provided seven regulations to combat flooding, requiring drainage reports of all new developments and onsite retention of runoff. In the 1998 plan, there were only two recommendations to minimize flooding damage because the problem was not recognized as severe. The plan examines each of the town villages and areas with specific recommendations as required. For example, the first master plan for Koskab. We also revisit and consider revising zoning and subdivision regulations to preserve neighborhood character, a critical report because it’s a promise we make to all 11 districts. Where there is no consensus, we recommended the creation of committees consisting of appropriate boards and commissions, including P&amp;Z, plus interested citizens wanting to be stakeholders, their housing, downtown, and transportation, traffic, and parking. Now, for downtown, we need to examine how much more and where building is possible under existing under existing F A R, and what changes should be made to reduce or control development. For these committees, the objective is to arrive at a consensus, and then to present the findings to P and Z. Upon agreement by P and Z and other public areas, P and Z will submit a proposed amendment to the R T M. Thus, we have allowed for continual examination and change in the plan for the next 10 years. The same proprogram, by the way-
Thirty seconds.
...is proposed for potential future problem areas not yet identified. Please note that the P and Z has not delegated its authority. Now, please allow me this one interruption. We think that consideration of the plan has, in recent instance, been translated as an attack on the planners. We certainly recognize it is duty of everyone to come express fault, everything in an honest way. But the commission itself consists of eight people, all of whom work together, and only one of them is professional in the real estate business. Another one deals with architectural, new buildings. Myself, I have no interest at all in Greenwich and real estate. I am a developer in Colorado, but only an investment developer. And I think there have been a lot of allegations made that are beyond the point of reasoning. I'd just simply like to close by saying that the diversity and backgrounds we have on a commission has been immeasurable. And with all the meetings we proceeded to, and all the listening we did to you people, and incidentally, two of the ideas that we now put in a plan came from some people in the Land Use Commission. For example, the endorsement by all the town use agencies, and also, as one of the two examples. We need to move forward as a town to work together, to fix the wrong, find the things that are right, and be certain we maintain the central character of our community. Do I have any more, or did I use it all up?
More than enough, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Fox, our town planner.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We've heard a lot of different comments tonight from some of the committee reports and some people that I'm sure you're going to hear from. I want to address just a few issues that our plan is addressing. We've been accused of not doing planning, and I would point out that since the 1998 plan, which had planning studies in it, we did do planning. The Byram Comprehensive Plan, we updated the open space plan in 2002, and in 2005, we did a planning study of the Two Family Zones, R6, to address development issues. Unfortunately, we did not adopt the regulations at that time because we did not have enough support, but we had a lot of opponents to that. The 2009 plan calls for neighborhood plans for Old Greenwich, Koskab, Glenville, the Downtown Master Plan, and again, the update to the 2002 Open Space Plan. These are all planning functions that P and Z plans to carry out. From the planning studies come regulation changes. As the Connecticut Supreme Court stated in the Smith versus the Town of Greenwich case, this court's prior recognition that a town plan is merely advisory. The purpose of the plan is to set forth the most desirable use of land in an overall plan for the town, because the overall objectives contained in the town plan must be implemented by the enactment of specific regulations. The plan itself can operate only as an interpretive tool. That is why it is a generalized document and not specific, because we need to implement regulations to carry out the goals and objectives of the plan. The 2009 plan proposes the following recommendations for the changes in regulations. The regrading of lots that are going to change more than 50% of the topography will require a special permit by the commission.
Thirty seconds.
That's because we need to look at flooding. Coastal and flood zone regulation changes, site coverage limits for each zone. If the 2009 plan is not approved, the 1998 plan stays in place. The problem with that is that it does not address the specific issues that this moment of time needs to address. And we're asking you to support our plan today so that we can move forward to make the implementation changes. Flooding was not as critical an issue in 1998. No mention of a master plan for downtown was in 1998. No target for open space was in 1998. Only the Post Road and Byram were the two plans that were specifically mentioned in the 1998 plan. We're calling for four other neighborhoods to be studied. The major emphasis in this plan is to address the problems in the community, and we are also pointing out that all of the town departments have supported this. SWRPA has supported it, and I think it begs to point out that the departments are carrying out 70% of the regulation, not regulation, but the recommendations, are D P W and Parks and Rec, both of whom have agreed to what is being posed in the plan and also are under the first selectmen's.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you very much.
Peter Tessie, our first selectman, to be followed by Peter Crumbine.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and ladies and gentlemen of the R T M. I have the opportunity to speak to a number of your committees the other last week. In terms of the plan, clearly, this is a plan that's been developed over the last 21 months. In my view, and the view of most who've followed the process, it's believed to be a very inclusive and open one that has tried to garner and obtain the input from the vast majority of citizens who came to participate. Not an easy task, certainly one that was reflected, the challenge is reflected in the various drafts that were submitted to all of us for review. But tonight, I think you have a document that is reflective of an open process, an inclusive process, and one that reflects the current issues facing the Town of Greenwich. I will tell you that containing in that document are many issues that are before us. Some, we are implementing as we speak. I would just share with you, on the topics of coastal resources, we are implementing changes in that area, focusing on dredging, working with the Army Corps, working with our state officials to secure funding to improve our waterfront. So we're building upon what was recommended in the plan. With regard to historic district and historical preservation, we have submitted to the State of Connecticut the request to become a certified local government, which will document, identify and document all the historic structures within our community, and work to secure grants to help maintain and preserve them for the future. We're working with the Connecticut D E P and D O T to address stormwater runoff from I-95, certainly another issue that was presented in this plan. In addition, we are looking at, on a local level, stormwater management and flooding issues. You, the R T M, have funded the allocations to do the various site reviews in the eight watersheds within the town. We are developing criteria to assess which projects will be presented for funding. And again, it's all in the, it's recommended in the plan, and we're working on it. So my message is that this document, while not be a perfect document, contains many of the issues that are facing our community, and that our community, through its elected leaders, are working to ameliorate and lead and resolve on. So I would encourage you to support the plan. You have the ultimate judgment. It's certainly one that you're able to render tonight, and I would encourage you to think about it in a broad context. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Crumbine.
Mr. Moderator, members of the R T M, good evening. To quote Voltaire, "The perfect is the enemy of the good." The proposed P O C D may not be perfect. In fact, there are a few things I don't like, and I've said so publicly. But after countless hours, a string of public meetings, and numerous revisions, the Planning and Zoning Commission, under the leadership of Don Heller, and Planning and Zoning staff under the leadership of Diane Fox, have indeed produced a good document worthy of your support. The option, if you turn this down, is to continue with the previous P O C D, which is more than 10 years old. That indeed would be a pity. The time has come to put this matter behind us, and I urge you to do so.
Thank you. Lynn Labrie, our selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, members of the R T M. Every 10 years, every 10 years, a conversation where we're going to come away with one voice. It isn't going to meet all of our needs, but we have had extensive input. We have had 23 public meetings. I feel that we have been listened to, and they have responded. They should be commended for their work. Diane Fox and members of the commission, I think it's an enormous amount of work and a little bit of abuse. I think it's time for us to move on. It will never be exactly what each of us want, because there are things we don't like about what we see happening in our community. But this is democracy at its best. I appreciate all the different views that I've heard. I've attended land use meetings. I've attended public meetings. It's very impressive how they have listened. But yes, they have listened, but we will never have one perfect voice. We have a good document, and I think, I urge you, please, to vote in favor of it this evening so we can move on and start using it.
Franklin Blumer to be followed by Kathy Steiner.
Good evening again. I have a 10-minute speech, which I've got to cram into three minutes, so here we go. Both the selectmen, the three select persons who spoke, said that a lot of work has been done, a lot of issues have been covered, and I agree with both of those points. What we need to do is decide whether this is a document that we approve of. That's why we have a role. Does this, in fact, reflect the will of the community? I don't think it does. Not only that, I don't think it's a good plan. Let me just take one issue that I am familiar with, and that's transportation. As many of you know, I served for six years on a regional transportation committee reporting to the State Transportation Strategy Board. One of the things I learned is that transportation issues are intimately linked with land use issues. This plan doesn't make any attempt to pull those two things together. They have commissioned a transportation report, and they put it in the explanatory materials and made really no effort to integrate those recommendations in the Fussell O'Neill Report into the main document. Mostly, what I want to say is this is our opportunity to set planning right. As I said in my committee report for the Land Use Committee, this is our opportunity, which should not be an opportunity that comes up once every 10 years, to set planning right. Mr. Crumbine quoted Voltaire. I'm going to quote Churchill. Churchill said, "Plans are of little importance, but planning is essential." What is he saying? He's saying that a plan is a part of an iterative process. It needs constantly to be updated, renewed, looked at. Doing a plan once every 10 years is taking a snapshot. Once that snapshot is taken, it's quickly out of date. One of the things that this plan does not do, one of the things that the Special Committee on the Integration of the P O C D and the C I P process recommended, is that there be an update process, and that is not in this plan. Planning is actually something that this body has been very concerned about, and in the 2006, 2007 term, we adopted four sense-of-the-meeting resolutions addressed to the inadequacy of planning in this town. The last of those was the recommendations of the Special Committee. Those recommendations, none of them in the form in which they were made in the Special Committee report, are in this plan.
Thirty seconds.
What this plan is, to use the commission, the chairman's term, is a hat rack. It is a, that's his term, not mine. What I understand him to mean is that everyone's agenda is there. That's not a plan. Yes, lots of stuff is in there. What we need is a plan that has direction, that can be implemented, because we know where it's headed. I think that's my time.
Yes, it is. Thank you very much. Kathy Steiner to be followed by Peter Berg.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, R T M members. This is a real pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Kathy Steiner. I am a wellness education teacher at Greenwich High School. I also have been living in Greenwich for the past 22 years, and I do have a ninth-grade daughter at the high school and an eighth-grade son here at Central Middle School. And I'm here representing the voices of all the teenagers at Greenwich High School. Teaching wellness education, I have a real insight into the lives of my students as far as sex, drugs, and rock and roll is concerned, and I think that it's really important to kind of look at what's happening in an adolescent's life today, and how can we, as parents, as teachers, as a community, come together to really help and keep our teenagers safe? I think it's so important to have activities that are fun, that are safe, and that are sober for our students to engage in. And so, in looking at this plan, I would strongly urge that the teenager voice do be heard, and we were actually part of this planning process with the help of Diane Fox. We had administered a survey to our students to find out what would they like Planning and Zoning to know in terms of putting a plan together for the next 10 years, and they came up with things like bowling, miniature golf, lights in the park, volleyball nets, places that they can go and hang out and be safe and have a straight and sober time. So that's the voice that I'd really like you to take away today, and thank you so much. I really do believe that it does take a village to raise a child. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Peter Berg to be followed by Karen Fossiliotis.
Good evening again, fellow members. As Vice Chair of the R T M Land Use Committee, I take our committee's role of P and Z oversight seriously. With that in mind, I have two concerns with the proposed Plan of Conservation and Development. My first concern is its approach to conservation, and my second concern is its approach to development. Regarding conservation, the plan sets a goal of 15% for protected open space. Currently, there are no open space projects in the first selectman's C I P plan, and the list of capital improvement projects on page 65 of this plan includes no open space projects to reach the 15% goal. For Greenwich to get from 13% to 15% within 10 years, we would need to acquire about 640 acres of open space. How does P and Z propose to accomplish this goal? I was a member of the R T M Special Committee to better integrate the P O C D and the capital improvement process, the C I P. The R T M specifically asked P and Z to identify in this plan any capital projects needed to reach its goals. If you think that open space is important, therefore, you should reject this plan until it lists one or more capital improvement projects for open space. Otherwise, we won't see open space projects in the C I P, and no open space will be acquired. Secondly, regarding development, our previous 1998 town plan said the purpose of downtown was to serve the residents of Greenwich, and the purpose of Koskab's Village Center was to serve the residents of Koskab without depending on attracting business from a wider area. This proposed plan abandons those goals. This plan acknowledges that downtown has become a regional employment and shopping center dependent upon non-residents. It offers no hope for a different future. This plan says there's a million square feet of additional potential floor area downtown, and 5 million square feet of additional commercial space across town. The plan is silent about whether the residents of Greenwich want additional commercial development in our town. Without a goal to stop such development, this plan undermines P and Z's own ability to use its zoning powers. On page 30, this plan says that Koskab, quote, "might also serve as a community business center in addition to being a neighborhood business center," unquote. I'm certain that most of my fellow residents of Koskab want our Village Center to remain a local Village Center without, that serves its residents. We don't want to be a community business center. This plan needs to say that. Please join supporters of open space and the residents of Koskab in opposing this plan. Thank you.
Karen Fossiliotis to be followed by Joe Pellegrino.
Good evening. In 1967, when my family moved to Greenwich from the Bronx, Greenwich Avenue had quite a different look from what you see today. At the top- At the top of the avenue was the Pickwick Arms Hotel. Woolworths &amp; Company sat in the middle, and Rogers, a clothing store, was about three-quarters down. Today, the Pickwick Arms Hotel is now Pickwick Plaza. Woolworths &amp; Company became Saks Fifth Avenue, and Rogers made way for Restoration Hardware. While many may wistfully recall the good old days and how Greenwich used to be, change is inevitable. Without the changes that have occurred on Greenwich Avenue, good or bad, depending on your point of view, these changes have allowed our town to remain a viable town. Not all towns in Connecticut have been so lucky. But our town founders also recognized there was a need to manage the change that occurs within our borders. Our Town Charter, the document on which many of the town's commissions and departments derive their powers and state law, requires that our Planning and Zoning Commission prepare, adopt, or amend a plan that shall show the commission's recommendation for the most desirable use of land within the town. From this mandate, P and Z has established a Plan of Conservation and Development, the POCD. The last POCD was prepared and adopted in 1998. It is an advisory document. As part of the process, P and Z has, by their account, spent 21 months preparing a new version of the POCD. They've engaged three different consultants, held numerous public meetings, solicited comments from the public. The version that this body has before today is a result of the P and Z's interpretation of the input they have received. P and Z, the Selectment, and many others have urged that we approve this version tonight. They argue that POCD will never please everybody, and by necessity, everything cannot be included in one document. They also argue they feel confident that this version adequately expresses the concerns of our community. While they admit the document can be improved in some language change, it is further argued that it is better to approve the present document since it can always be amended later if need be. I'm not convinced that these are viable reasons to adopt the POCD, and here's why. First, if the RTM were to approve this document as it's currently written, we will be setting out a blueprint for Greenwich that is not advisory in nature because it requires that the town do something. For example, turn to page 20. It requires a special permit for new and converted two-family houses. Or how about page 6, which says the Coastal Resources Advisory Board shall develop plans? Or page 32, the Flood and Erosion Control Board should address flooding issues? Or we will create 30 seconds. village plans. These are not advisory, these are requirements. But if you don't agree with my interpretation, I offer another reason for you to vote against it. While some criticize the document as being light in details, the document also makes a number of recommendations that I wonder if we know what the details are. For example, did you know that if we adopt this version of the POCD, we will be approving a recommendation that the town work with the state legislature to modify a state law under section 8-30G?
Thank you very much.
Do you know what this is? I can tell you, but I'm sure you don't.
Joe Pellegrino to be followed by Bob Brady.
Good evening. I intend to vote in favor of the POCD and wish you to consider the merits of supporting it, too. First, I absolutely want to acknowledge the effort put forth by those who have so steadfastly spoken against the plan and the comments regarding its shortcoming. I believe your comments have allowed for thoughtful and careful review. They've certainly challenged me to think about what's the right course of action here. Part of that challenge comes from perhaps an understanding of how many of us feel disappointed by the changing character in our local villages in the downtown area over the years. In the commercial districts, we've seen local family ownership give way to national chains, coupled with a more limited offering of merchandise focused on upscale image. In our residential neighborhoods, we've seen a shift in temperament from an appreciation of prosperity for the good of the community at large to a focus by some on the display of wealth. These trends clearly challenge the New England village feeling that Greenwich has embodied over the years in our sense of community. Now, I believe the best way to tackle these issues that face us is by adopting this plan. And I say this because the heart of the POCD lies in establishing the groundwork for the development of new and revised regulations. And regulations, in my opinion, are the single best, if not only, means to fairly address the rights of ownership and real property development. I believe it is only through the regulatory process that we, as citizens, can preserve the best features of our town going forward. I also believe that postponing the adoption of this plan is a poor use of our financial resources. I simply do not see where having more meetings with rhetorical repetition is going to substantially change the plan that would come forward down the road. In all likelihood, we will simply be having the same conversation all over again. So to summarize, when I worked through the issues of this plan and listened to all the comments in opposition to it, I tried to find the two key principles at work that would give me a basis for making a decision. And the first principle, in my judgment, is really what I consider the rule of law. I think we can only address the challenges, the fabric and character of our community by adhering to the proper development of rules and regulations.
30 seconds.
And the second principle is fiscal conservatism. I think it's a better use of our financial resources to have our professional staff work on the implementation of this plan's recommendations than to spend more time addressing a revision. I appreciate your attention. I hope you'll join me in approving this plan tonight. Thank you very much.
Bob Brady to be followed by Janet Lockton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening again. I'm Bob Brady, Riverside District 5, and I rise to urge you to vote no on item 22. There are a number of reasons to reject this document as the town's plan. However, specifically, I call your attention to its failure to comply with the RTM's explicit request, adopted by a 140 to 20 with two abstention vote at its December 2007 meeting, quote, "that the description of a project in the POCD demonstrate how the project would implement a particular goal of the POCD and enable concerned town departments and agencies to make preliminary estimates of the cost and likely public support and/or opposition to the project," close quote. The document before us does not do as we asked. On page 65, it lists 36 potential capital improvement projects, such as number nine, create the Koskab Power Plant Park, or number 13, complete the public safety complex, and number 24, replace or rehabilitate the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center. Many of the listed projects are worthy and would be done with or without the plan, but they do not satisfy their requirement to, quote, "demonstrate how the project would implement a particular goal," close quote. The cited items can be inferentially linked to the plan's page, little Roman numerals, three goals up in the front. The power plant park may be part of goal five, to protect and enhance water and land natural resources. Completing the safety complex does not appear to implement any goal, and replacing the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center could support either goal three or five. You can make your own assessment of how the CIP projects are linked to the plan's goals, but you can't tell what planning and zoning's thinking is. And some goals are clearly unstated, such as the one supporting completing the safety complex. Bicycles and sidewalks are extremely important to the plan. They're in seven of the 36 project recommendations. But what goals do they implement? Not clear. There is no project included in the list that says essentially fix the flooding. The CIP list skirts the issue by reviewing the existing Bible Street floodways in number 27, working with the Army Corps of Engineers to address flooding areas in number 31,
30 seconds.
or evaluating stormwater funding options, number 32. We could follow the plan and do essentially nothing about one of the town's most important problems. When you move further in the document to the Implementation Action Plan on page 67, the tenuous link of goals to projects is lost completely. Item 35, replace ferries disappears, but a new task appears. The DPW is assigned the task in 4.12 to, quote, "to find ways to protect neighborhood-oriented small businesses," close quote, in Old Greenwich.
Thank you very much.
I urge you to vote no.
Janet Lockton to be followed by Paul Settlemeyer.
There are no sections in the Plan of Conservation and Development that address far, height, setback, noise, scale, size of accessory buildings, hours of construction that would protect residential property owners and neighborhoods from the blight of McMansions and overdevelopment. There are at least three provisions that will negatively affect the future of Greenwich. They will encourage development, increase town costs and burden, and add another layer of government. It will change the demographics and landscape of the town if adopted. Build, 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 that is the subliminal message hidden but pervasive within the proposed POCD. It recommends greater density for commercial and residential development on-site in exchange for swap of off-site property, 1.44. And a mandatory requirement that regulations provide affordable housing, apartment buildings, at Greenwich and Old Greenwich railroad stations and bus routes, 3.19. And seize control of zoning regulations by proposing a change in state statute, thus providing developers greater incentives to break local zoning regulations, 3.10. It will increase town building costs and be a budget buster. There are substantial proposed increases to the town and individual homeowners. The plan increases costs for all municipal projects, requiring all new construction projects use green energy materials in construction and energy use. For example, according to the Building Committee of Nathaniel Witherall, it will cost at least an additional $500,000 to comply. And it develops regulations to encourage and require use of energy lead standard for new development in both residential and business zones. That's item number 6.24. Another layer of government to implement a plan that does not reflect the views of Greenwich residents. Members of the committee will be the first election. He currently agrees with the plan, but he changes every two years, perhaps not. Representatives from planning and zoning, they all agree with the plan. BET members, RTA members, town department heads, they don't even live in town, boards and commissions, and others deemed appropriate. Who is the appointing authority? How many people are on this thing, and where are they going?
30 seconds.
Thank you. Responsibilities of the committees are to prioritize actions in the implementation plan and assign responsibilities to agencies, create a timetable for completion. According to the Town Charter, the RTM either approves or rejects the POCD. I recommend that this body reject the POCD. The plan does almost nothing to protect residential quality of life, increases costs for every future municipal project, and creates another layer of government bureaucracy to shepherd through, in many cases, unpopular regulations. Implementation of the proposed POCD will negatively impact the quality of life in Greenwich. Thank you.
Paul Settlemeyer to be followed by Michael Carter.
Fellow members of the RTM, I wish to make the following comments on why I support approval of the 2009 POCD. I understand that not everyone agrees on all the proposals in the plan and that some individuals believe that important points have not received proper emphasis. I believe through our discussions, we have identified areas that need more attention and need to be included for discussion in the plan implementation phase. I am concerned that if the 2009 plan is rejected, the 1998 plan will control. I think we need a current plan with a focus on current issues. I believe the review process in the 1998 plan was form over substance. I attended several meetings of the review meetings and believe the meetings accomplished very little. Therefore, I endorse the proposal to create a Plan Implementation Committee. The review meetings under the 1998 plan were generally held every two years. I think the process calling for quarterly PIC meetings and a written, and a requirement that a written report be submitted to the P and Z and the RTM is an improvement in the review process. I support the recommendations that a housing task force and a downtown study committee be created and empowered. We have done studies, expensive studies, of both areas, and I would like to see the discussions of both areas moved out into the public forum for open discussion and development of specific plans on what we, as a community, want or don't want in these areas. As the plan indicates, both the Housing Task Force and the Downtown Study Group will need the support of a more active architectural review committee and historic district commission. I believe positive results can be achieved by creating a housing task force and a downtown study committee as proposed in the 2000 plan. My neighbors and I have already used a recommendation in the plan to expand the number of waterfront access points to lobby against the trial balloon to sell the fishing pier at the end of Steamboat, and a developer's proposal to decrease open waterfront access in the middle of the RBS building. I have received emails, phone calls, and comments on the street on the plan. A majority of those individuals who contact me supported the 2009 plan. I believe the plan is an improvement over the 1998 plan. Its implementation will require time, effort, and involvement from all of us. I believe the plan will help us focus our financial resources in other areas like stormwater management, transportation, and open space planning. Please join me in approving the 2009 Plan of Conservation and Development.
Michael Carter to be followed by Vince DiMarco.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM, I am speaking today to encourage you to vote no on the POCD. I believe the plan does not make sufficient definitive recommendations beyond the goals of the 98 plan, and in some instances, is less definitive. Many of the major issues identified in 98 plan, flooding, house size, regionalization of downtown, were never addressed, restated in the 2009 plan. As an example, to minimize flood danger associated with individual sites in the 98 plan, it recommended, quote, "strengthen building zone and subdivision regulations to reduce runoff, minimize impervious surfaces, control use of floodplains, and require detention, infiltration, absorption, recharge areas on development sites." In the 2009 POCD, the recommendation in section 1.4, quote, "to reduce and manage runoff, establish regulations to limit impervious surfaces, lot coverage, reduce site hydrology for all new construction on residential properties," close quote. Essentially, the recommendations are the same, if anything less specific. The agency, given the task to address the issue in the POCD, is planning and zoning. My question is what progress has been made during the last 10 years, and why do we think the next 10 will be any different? Both the 98 and 2009 POCD identify the problem of mega houses, the phrase in 98, and large houses out of character with surrounding neighborhoods, and teardowns from section three of the 209 plan. The 98 plan recommends the following: strictly enforce and adhere to zoning regulations, limit FAR in the two- and four-acre zones, reexamine FAR in other zones, consider site coverage limits in all zones, consider modified setbacks in all residential zones, preserve existing front yard setbacks for streetscapes. The 2009 POCD has the following recommendation, 3.1 in the context: monitor residential buildout and develop new land use regulations to preserve traditional development patterns. Again, the problem is identified in 98 plan, but the here-to-difference in specificity is even more pronounced. We have been told the problem with the 98 plan was that the various town departments did not buy in. These tasks are and have been in the purview of P and Z for decades.
30 seconds.
P and Z has always had the authority to address these problems. Why should we expect anything different now, particularly given the generic recommendations? Unless POC is finally compelled to address these problems now with a no vote. Thank you.
Vince DiMarco to be followed by Todd Ledonia. You gotta push the button?
How's that? Okay. You've heard lots of reasons already why not to approve the plan and why to approve the plan. I'm not going to go through the laundry list myself, but from my perspective, we have a responsibility to go through this process on behalf of our constituents, to carefully examine this new version of our town guiding document. There are two things I think we need to consider in deciding whether to adopt the draft 2009 POCD. What the document says, the direction it will guide the town in over the next decade, if adopted and acted upon as presented. And second, most importantly, I think, more importantly, is our level of confidence that despite the non-committal language, the plan's recommendations will be reviewed, revised, and acted upon on a regular basis, and that the P and Z will commit to bring forward for consideration of amendments to regulations, recommendations deemed most critical to the safety, health, welfare... safety, health, welfare of all the residents, employees, and other visitors of the town as soon as possible. I'm not confident that that's going to happen. There doesn't appear to be a mandate in here. There's a lot of "shoulds" in there instead of "we must," and so that's why I really am uncomfortable in voting for this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Ledonia to be followed by Chris von Kaiserling.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests. Todd Ledonia from District 8. I really don't have any profound statement tonight, only a plea. Remember, we are all volunteers, so please do not vote for this because a group of volunteers have spent a lot of time working on it. You've spent a lot of time, too. I know I've been to a lot of meetings. But also, please do not vote against it because you don't like the PNZ Commission. They're wonderful people. They've taken a lot of personal abuse that they should never take. This is not a place for personal abuse. So vote. Vote one way or the other, for or against, based on your opinion of the plan, not for any other reason. I hope you've read it, and you've made your decision before tonight. Please don't abstain, just vote. Thank you.
Chris von Kaiserling to be followed by Frederick Lee.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. After Hurricane Katrina, I was down in New Orleans with some of my friends cleaning out flood-damaged homes. And one evening, one of the old timers told this story about faith. He said, "When the hurricane was coming to Louisiana, the city announced an evacuation from all the low-lying areas, and they sent the police out with buses to pick up people to take them to safety." Now, he said there was this old Cajun guy, Richard, who was sitting there, and he said to them, "No, he's going to stay. I trust in God. He took care of me all this time. He'll take care of me now." Then the rains came, the floodwaters came up to the front door, firemen came by in boats to evacuate the stragglers. The old man, he said, "He's going to stay. I trust the Lord. He'll save me." Then the levees broke, and the river really rushed in, and the old Cajun, he's hanging up by the TV antenna on his roof clinging for dear life. Coast Guard helicopter comes by, and they called down to him. He said, "Climb in the basket. We'll haul you out of here to safety." And he says, "No, you guessed it. You guessed it. I'm staying here. The Lord's going to take care of me. God saved me." Well, he drowned. Now, he was wet and mad when he came storming through the pearly gates and right up to God's throne. He says, "How you do this to me, Lord? I pray all my life. I trust you all my life, and you let me drown like that?" And God says, "Whoa, Richard, Richard. Why are you so upset? I always wash out for you. I sent you a bus, a boat, and even a helicopter. What more could I do for you? Who do you trust, and where do you place that trust? That's what's before us tonight. None of us are really planners. We don't have the sophistication. There are two men back there from Plentometrics that is hired to guide the system through, which we didn't have the advantage for last time. Who has the RTM approved to manage the town's planning? Who has the most resources to do that work? Who has spent two years of their lives creating a plan for Greenwich? Who has done all of the work? So who are you going to believe? Where do you place your trust? Well, the selectmen said they're behind it, but, you know, they're just titular heads of Greenwich, right? All the departments say they're behind it, but, you know, they're paid employees. Swerper agrees with it, but who are they? Because they don't have any power anyhow. You got to ask yourself tonight, when you look at this plan, what is reasonable, what is doable, and what's sensible? And I think then, I trust, you'll join me in voting for this POCD. Thank you.
Frederick Lee to be followed by Jack Moffley.
Good evening. I'm here to essentially ask you to vote, consider to vote no on item 22. Essentially, I'm going to focus on the POCD's issues regarding the downtown. The avenue is a representation of the Greenwich, and the 2009 POCD has given up on the downtown. The 1998 POCD acknowledged the desire that the downtown not become a regional shopping center, a destination. The document before us states, quote-unquote, "The downtown is now a regional shopping center." We have been told that it is too late. We from District 1 disagree. With the current economic climate, we now have the opportunity to do a do-over in terms of saving what we consider our original downtown. We from District 1 believe there is still a solution to the traffic congestion and to preserve the original character of the downtown. Two, the misplaced responsibility for the action plan to promote business, social, civil, cultural activities to maintain residential and economic viability in the downtown has been essentially dedicated to the Chamber of Commerce. The responsibility to be shared by the stakeholders in the community, including government agencies that are responsible to the people. And lastly, the POCD has the recommendation that the first electman chair a downtown study committee. This committee essentially takes away from the RTM the ability to vet and discuss the merits of recommendations in the overall direction of the downtown. Plus, how is the committee to be staffed? Essentially, if you read the wording, it is too vague and not clearly defined. We have concern that there is no language on how members will be selected and assurances that there will be a balanced representation from the people. We therefore ask our fellow districts to support District 1 in voting no on item 22 so that a more defined and executable plan can be put in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Moffley to be followed by C.C. Morgan.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM, I think just about everything that you can say about this plan has been said already, so I'm going to hopefully take less time in my allotted three minutes. Last fall, as a public service, Greenwich Magazine ran a series of articles on the POCD in its original version, really as a public service. I mention it only because I happen to be the author of it, and I had an opportunity to get to know the work of the Planning and Zoning Commission and developed a great respect for the thoroughness of their research and their conscientious attention to the job. And I can't say enough for them. I think they've taken a little bit of abuse this night that was not deserved, so I'm coming to their aid on that one. We've heard that the people say that the 1998 POCD is superior to the current one, and it probably does have some good things about it that the new one may not have. But what it doesn't have is timeliness, and we're in a different age. In the last 10 years, we've seen some major changes occur. We're all familiar with them. We've seen an enormous increase in traffic. We've seen a runaway building spree with houses of all sizes and shapes, and we've seen unfortunately not enough control, and this is the control that we're looking for now. And I believe, in talking to Diane and Don Heller, that their desire is exactly the desire of the community, to put all of this under control. Now, we've also got to face something we didn't have in 1998, and that's the recession that limits the ability of the town to respond to many of these things. And I don't envy Steve Walco and Peter Tessie here and the administration of this town to try to carry out any of the things in this POCD. But still, it's a document, it's a guide and not a regulatory document, and this is the difference that seems to be the dividing line between those who are for the current plan and those who are against.
Thirty seconds.
Most importantly, the POCD does set up a means by which it can be renewed and adjusted and amended as time goes on. It should not be a static document. It should be a live document, and that's exactly what the aim and what they have built into the document. It's impossible to create a plan that's going to be universally accepted in all its parts by everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Dacus, for what purpose do you rise?
I'd like to rise to move the previous question. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Moffley, your time has expired.
Thank you.
All right. We have been debating item 22 now for approximately one hour. I did indicate that we had approximately 30 speakers. We have heard from approximately 20. I have on the list 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 names. So I will leave it up to the body in terms of what it wants to do. I will accept the motion for the previous question, which is a motion to cut off debate. However, the motion for the previous question is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. Mr. Petraselli? I'm unaware of that, but thank you for letting us know. Mr. Petraselli says there is a speaker who wants to propose an amendment to this. So keep that in mind as you vote on Mr. Dacus's motion for the previous question. So to summarize, if, I will call for a voice vote. This motion is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. So if you want to immediately cut off debate and proceed to vote on item 22, you should vote in favor. If you want to continue to hear debate on item 22, you should vote no. All those in favor of Mr. Dacus's motion for the previous question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion has carried. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item 22, and proceed to pull your delegation? Since that is the last item on our agenda, we will need to await the result of the vote before adjourning the meeting. I have the result of the vote on the Plan of Conservation and Development. This is item 22. Those in favor, 99; opposed, 76; abstaining, 1. That item has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting and objections, this meeting is adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming, and have a safe trip home, and have a happy and enjoyable summer.